Good morning, Vice Mayor Reese.
Good morning, Madam Clerk. Are we all ready to go?
We are, and just to give everybody in the room information, Mayor Sheevy is on via Zoom this morning as well, so we'll cover that in roll call.
Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is our joint special meeting of the Reno City Council Redevelopment Agency Board for Wednesday, March 29th, 2023. Madam Clerk, let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna ask President Sandoval to lead us in the pledge this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to item A2, roll call. Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here.
Duor.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert, absent at this time. Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Sheevy.
Here.
Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Thank you so much. Let's start with public comment. Do we have any public comment this morning?
Sorry, we're just checking your sound over here. I apologize. We do have some public commenters registered today, so I will go ahead and read my disclosure, and then we will roll into public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action on any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Tori Sundheim, followed by Veronica Cortez, followed by Eric LaRude.
Ms. Sundheim, good morning. Welcome.
Is this on already? Good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name's Tori Sundheim. I'm Chair of the Human Rights Commission. And I came here to invite some discussion on a proposal to provide funding, potentially $10,000, towards the Human Rights Commission for the upcoming fiscal year. Zainab Arkawi is our vice chair. She was not able to be here today, but does share these sentiments with me. I understand this meeting is the second of several to design the city's budget, so I felt this was a good time to make this request and just invite discussion on it. The commission, we have grown and stabilized over the past few years, and we've begun to engage with the public on human rights issues, as was our purpose, including to activate the public on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. As volunteers, we commissioners donate and invest much of our time and energy into the commissions between our meetings, and I think that we have the capacity to do a lot with what we've been given already. And the next step, I believe, is funding. And in terms of funding, I have really, we have a couple of ideas. First of all, we've had some programming that we have been developing in concert with some organizations. One was with a component of the International Cordillera Film Festival to put on some community-based programming around diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, including relevant film showings and panels as part of that program. And I understand that that kind of a specific thing is something that we are already working on funding for. However, we have lots of other ideas in that nature, and it would be fantastic if the commission were able to utilize funds to meet these new partners halfway in developing additional programming. And we have so many ideas that we would be able to narrow it down and be prudent about that as a commission. The commission, of course, would have to vote on and decide where to prioritize any types of programming. But the other idea is similar to, I believe, what the Reno Arts and Culture Commission has, is to develop a potential grant program where we could help support community initiatives, community-led and self-programmed initiatives on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And those are two general ideas and ways that we felt would help facilitate the Human Rights Commission and its purpose and in furthering that. And we believe that financial support will confirm the cities creating and continuing to support the Human Rights Commission. Thank you. I'm available if you have any questions for me, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sundheim. Always a privilege to have you in chambers, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Veronica Cortez, followed by Eric LaRude.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Veronica Cortez, a citizen of Washoe County since '77. I'm actually a St. Mary's baby, third generation, born and raised in Sun Valley, Virginia Palmer, Billingshurst, and Reed's. So just a little bit about me. Homegrown. I really never done a lot in Reno, but here we are, and I'm here to introduce myself. So what I do is I have a little ranch called Valley Amigos. We're gonna be out at Farm Day at the Ranch of San Rafael. So I don't know if this works.
It does. Yeah, just place it on there, and then the clerk will capture it.
So this is what I do. Community events. I'm a lunch lady, been a lunch lady since '99, graduated in '97, so I really haven't been out of Washoe County. President of the Nevada School Nutrition Association for a couple of years, traveled, did that. Anyway, I'm back in town, and right now what we're doing is we're working with animals. We have this Farm Day going on. In the bottom, you'll see that goat, that spot, that's Ariana. And we've been doing this for a few years, but I've been actually invited to join this organization now that has gone on a bigger level, and we actually do like bull rides. So if I can change this, I don't know if this will fit. I'll kinda put this up here. Is that too big?
Just leave it. We'll get it updated.
Can I just hold it up? I don't know. Okay. So this would be an advertisement of what we do now. And so my dad is Hispanic. He came in from Abascalientes when he was about 16, worked for Bender Warehouse till he retired out, had a temporary labor service company. I have a pizza place out in Sun Valley. We're just homegrown, and what we're trying to do is get some, we don't want money, so everybody should be happy about that. We're looking for approvals and blessings so that we can continue these bull rides. We've never really been in Reno except for the Livestock Event Center, which, I'm gonna throw out some numbers. Ticketmaster collected 150,000 and took 102,000, so we got a check for 20,000, and we couldn't pay any of our artists and stuff. So we've got offered to do an event in the Glow Arena, the Glow Plaza downtown. It's not open yet. It's off of Fourth Street, 670 West Fort Street. The new organizer of those events was a guy who was doing the Cinco de Mayo in the Grand Sierra, but we've decided to bring our events to downtown Reno. So we have an event planned. We submitted an application for the 30th of April. It's called Jalisco en la Pierna. It's gonna involve hopefully bull rides if we can get them into the Glow Arena. We have, this would be, I can put this down, it's kind of our idea of how we'll set up the Glow Arena. Like I said, it's not ready yet. It was supposed to be open on Cinco de Mayo, but hopefully we can do the grand opening April 30th. We've already been in contact with the fire department. We have the remsen lined up. We've already done the sound permit. We have the vendor's permit. The, I think it's Jay, the person who bought the sands, I can't remember their name exactly. They're gonna be handling all the alcohol. We have ESI signed up for security, so it's like we're ready to go. We had planned to do it in the Reno Livestock Event Center, but something happened, dates got erased, money got handed to other people, and we got kicked out. So this was kind of our last choice. So if you could please just give us a blessing and help us out. If we come across in meeting, I'm Veronica. My best friend is Erica, and we just wanna buck some bulls and have some fun. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez.
And our final public commenter today is Eric LaRude.
Mr. LaRude, welcome. Always a privilege to have you in chambers.
Thank you. Good morning, council. My name is Eric LaRude. I'm a downtown Reno resident. I've lived in the Montage since 2019. And piggybacking off the last speaker, I'm a Reno native, Hunter Lake, Swope, and Reno High, just thought I'd throw that out there. I also am a board member on the Downtown Reno Partnership, representing residents. So I am very engaged in downtown Reno and very vested in what is going on in downtown Reno. I understand that part of your meeting today and yesterday is dealing with your budget for next year and making decisions about how to move forward with some projects for downtown Reno. I wanted to speak today to urge you to dedicate funding to the following. Please take action on the recommendations from the Virginia Street Placemaking Study and any other downtown improvement plans that are being put together. There's been a lot of effort behind these plans, especially the Virginia Street Placemaking Study. Now is a great time to act. Create a plan to accomplish these recommendations and improvements. Fund the plan to accomplish these recommendations and improvements, and execute the plan to accomplish the recommendations and improvements. I know the Downtown Reno Partnership will be willing to work with you, and so will many downtown residents. Also, make improvements to the code enforcement process so that the city of Reno can better address what is detrimental in downtown Reno. Maybe the code needs to be revised in some way, streamlined, whatever that is. Maybe more employees need to be added to the code enforcement department. But what is key is that the city of Reno needs to hold businesses accountable for their bad actions that create unsafe and unpleasant spaces, and to hold building owners accountable for their lack of action that allows for unsafe and unpleasant spaces. Also, just an idea, but how about adding some Reno police officers on foot patrol in downtown Reno? That could go a long way to making downtown Reno a better spot. Lastly, support events and activities that will increase foot traffic in downtown Reno. This will be good for downtown businesses. This will be good for downtown residents, and it'll be good for downtown visitors. Please do all that you can in this budget to help downtown Reno become a more vibrant and clean and safe centerpiece of our great city. We appreciate all your efforts, and we look forward to working with you to keep moving forward and getting these things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaRude, and also for your written public comment. We appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor, we have no additional public comment in the room. However, for the record, you stated we did receive one letter in favor of an item which has been distributed to the Reno City Council, and we do have one voicemail which we'll play now.
Good afternoon. This message is being left at 13:35 on March 28th. Message is for the March 29th City Council Budget Meeting. Mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Jim Galloway, a 16-year resident of the Paladio on First and Sierra Street. When I moved downtown, there was a local micro-transportation system, the Sierra Spirit. Not sexy or electric, but timely and functional. It no longer exists. Please budget a local transportation system for those of us who live here to take us between UNR and Midtown. I used to be able to walk, but as I age, it has become difficult. Consider us seniors. Nothing fancy, but practical, please. Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, Vice Mayor Reese, with that, we're closing out public comment, and we're moving on to item A4, Approval of the Agenda.
Okay, can I get a motion from the body, please?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Duor, a second by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion on this item? Hearing no, no, call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on to item B1. And we do not have any public commenters registered for this item today, so we're just ready for a presentation from President Sandoval.
Okay, I think Mr. Edelstein, are you gonna give us some time?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, and Council. Eric Edelstein, Assistant City Manager, for the record, here today to take you through a journey of the various layers of downtown, past, present, and where we hope to take it for the future. Really excited to launch today's agenda with our good friend from downtown and the University of Nevada Reno, President Brian Sandoval.
President Sandoval, welcome. Always a honor to have you in chambers. You know, you've got some friends with you, Mr. Flores and Mr. Brown, so thank you for calling.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, city managers, city staff, for the record, Brian Sandoval, and consistent with the previous speakers, Little Flower School, Bishopman Oak High School, University of Nevada. So great to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to present today. You just introduced Michael Flores, who is indeed our Vice President of Government Relations for the university, and Austin Brown, who is our Coordinator for Government Affairs. You're going to be seeing much of them and have seen much of them. Before I get into my remarks, I'd like to thank Councilman Martinez for his support of our students who are attending Latino Leadership Conference in Chicago, and I understand you'll be on our campus today, meeting with our students. So very grateful for you and your mentorship of our students. So now to our very proud institution, the University of Nevada Reno, founded in 1874. We'll soon be celebrating our sesquicentennial this year, which is hard to believe, 150 years of serving the people of the great state of Nevada. As you may or may not know, we are a Carnegie High Research Institution, which means we are one of the top 120 research institutions in the country, and we also have a Carnegie classification for being community-engaged, which means our students, faculty, and staff are engaged in the community. We're very excited that we are an emerging Hispanic-serving institute, which means, institution, which means we will have a 25% enrollment of Latinx students. We're about between 24 and 25% now, so we are right on the precipice. We were also recognized as being a voter-friendly campus, fourth year in a row. I believe our student engagement, and I suppose that it interests all of you, was over 80%, and so we're very excited about that. Wanted to take a moment to talk about our graduates and the key metrics from the 2021 First Destination Survey, which comes from our campus. 67% of our graduates are working full or part-time post-graduation. Of this 67%, 90% are full-time employees. 72% of the full-time employees are employed within Nevada, and 64% are working in the greater Reno area. Of the 72% bachelor's degree recipients working full-time in Nevada, 83% are originally from Nevada and stayed in Nevada for work. And this one was interesting to me. 56% are originally from another state and stayed in Nevada. So I think that speaks to the experience they've had in this community. We are now, as you are as well, engaged in the midst of our legislative session and spending a lot of time in Carson City. Our budget priorities with regard to the legislative session have been, first and foremost, a restoration of our budget. We took a 12% budget cut, which meant we had to keep approximately 200 to 250 positions open on our campus in order to budget. So that limited our ability of our staffing and for our faculty. We're very pleased that Governor Lombardo has restored that budget in his governor's recommended budget. We're also seeking the construction of a new Life Sciences Building for those of you, and I know you all are familiar with our campus, the Fleishman Ag Building, which is where a lot of tremendous research goes on. That building was built in the late '50s, and there's only so much you can do to an old building, particularly with modern building standards and modern research. So we are hoping to get a new Life Sciences Building. We also have sought, and the governor has put in his budget, more money for graduate medical education, which is to allow for more medical residencies in the state of Nevada. You may have read that some of our graduates of our medical school placed locally here at Renowned Health for a pediatrics residency. So we're really hopeful that with these, with more GME, we can have more of our medical students stay in town. Another important component of the budget is an increase in our graduate student stipends. As you can all appreciate, the cost of living has increased dramatically, and these stipends have not grown concurrently with that. So the governor has proposed an increase in the graduate student stipend, which will allow us to recruit more graduate students, which increases our research portfolio and increases the amount of graduate students on our campus. Also, within the governor's budget, our cost of living adjustments, which we're very pleased about. I believe it's 8% in the first year of the biennium, 5% in the second year of the biennium. That will be very helpful in terms of attracting and retaining quality faculty on our campus. And speaking of the legislative session, UNR Day is April 3rd, this coming Monday, and there will be a reception at the 5:30 at the Griffin Company. You obviously are all invited, but we are going to have students, faculty, staff, even members of the band at the legislature. So I want to next move to a very exciting project, our Gateway District Project, and I want to thank you all for your support and your interest in this project. And as you can appreciate, this really is that really first, present, concrete example of this partnership that we are excited about extending with the city of Reno. You're looking at the parking garage, and I'm sure you've seen it as you've driven on Interstate 80. We're very pleased with the construction and completion of that parking garage, and I want to thank those of you who were able to come to the ribbon cutting. I had the opportunity to ride in the original Batmobile, which, as I said then, if you would have talked to the five-year-old Brian in the '60s, he would have never believed that he would have had the opportunity to do that. But we have indeed been working with Edgemore, which is a national developer on a public-private partnership for the construction of a new business building as well as a new hotel conference building. That is the image that we, the latest version, and I think very close to what we hope to accomplish. And as you can see, it's very beautiful. That is on the corner of Eighth and Virginia Street. You see in the bottom right-hand corner a portion of the Walgreens Drugstore, just to orient you all. And as you head north on Virginia Street, on your immediate right, you will see the Hotel Conference Center with approximately 150 keys, a conference center on the top floor with a terrace similar to what you see at the Nevada Museum of Art. And this will allow us to host extensive events, will allow the community to host events on campus. To the right is the proposed business building. It is in the shape of an L, but it will accommodate. Our College of Business will be able to relocate that. Within it, on the bottom, you can see a rotunda-looking type building beneath it. That is a new lecture hall, which will seat 300 to 400 individuals, so we will be able to feature lectures. That will be on the bottom. This is a better image of that. On top is a café, restaurant, and again, you'll be able to host meetings and plated dinners there, so we're really excited about the types of meetings and speakers that we can attract to the campus. Next image, please. So this is the plaza in between the two buildings. So on the left would be the business building. On the right would be the proposed Hotel Conference Center, but again, an opportunity for people to settle, to talk, to chat. Again, we're very excited about that. The business building will be approximately 120,000 square feet. This will be the new front door of the university, as you recall. And again, I want to thank you all for your support of renaming Center Street to University Way. This building will be immediately adjacent to University Way. And you are all invited, I believe it is October 12th, off the top of my head, for the groundbreaking for that building, presuming that we do get the support of the Board of Regents with whom we will be going before in the first week of June. So you're now looking at the currently existing Nevada State Health Lab on the north end of our campus. It's immediately adjacent to our medical school. We're very grateful to Governor Sisalak and the legislature. They appropriated $75 million for the construction of a new state public health lab. And as I know you are all familiar with the state public health lab, that is where all the testing for the state of Nevada occurs, particularly the COVID testing during the course of the pandemic. That building was constructed in the '70s, and again, similar to the Fleishman Ag Building, has kind of reached, as we like to say, it's been fully amortized and needs to be modernized. So Governor Sisalak and the legislature, in their wisdom, did appropriate that $75 million for a new building. That construction will begin this year. Probably ask the question, what are we gonna do with the current building? The legislature also appropriated $3 million to remodel this building, and it will become the new home of the School of Public Health. So we're very excited about the neighborhood that we're developing up there with the nursing school, the School of Public Health, the medical school, as well as the Nevada State Public Health Lab. Next slide. I believe we talked about, in a previous discussion, our new University of Nevada Reno at Lake Tahoe. As you may be aware, Sierra Nevada University and their Board of Trustees essentially donated that campus to the University of Nevada Reno, and it is now UNR at Lake Tahoe. We did make a commitment to the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities, as well as the U.S. Department of Education, that we would do what's called a teach-out for the students, the Sierra Nevada University students, so that they could finish their degrees in the exact same areas that they were, or they had the option of taking our courses as well. But as they matriculate out, we have to decide what we're going to do with that beautiful campus. So what we have in mind is, you've heard of studying abroad, a semester abroad. We will have a semester at Tahoe for our students, and it will be interdisciplinary. It will be undergraduate-themed, experiential, transformative, and an immersive experience at the lake. There are dormitories on that campus, so we'll be able to accommodate between 200 and 300 students at a time. The tuition will be identical, whether you're attending classes here in Reno or up at Lake Tahoe, but it truly is an opportunity and experience that you will not be able to get anywhere else in higher education. And it will be available to students at the other institutions throughout the state of Nevada, so we very much welcome that. We also will have what we call a summer at Lake Tahoe. Again, what we are hopeful of is, at some point in the future, that it will be essentially a Tahoe Institute, where we will have world-renowned speakers, meetings, and discussions up at Lake Tahoe, conferences, et cetera. That will begin this summer. Also, residency at Lake Tahoe. We really want to invite preeminent faculty from other institutions to teach at our institution, and as I like to tell people, anything with Lake Tahoe in the sentence is probably a yes, and so we think we will be able to attract people. Our next local government partnership meeting will be hosted at Lake Tahoe on this campus, so we're hopeful that you will all be able to attend, and we'd love to tour you. You're looking at the library on the campus of the University of Nevada Reno at Lake Tahoe, which, when it was part of the Sierra Nevada University, was ranked as one of the top 10 most beautiful libraries in the country, and I think you can see why. Next slide, please. We also have established within the last 18 months what we call collegiate academies, or University of Nevada Collegiate Academies. Essentially, bottom line, it's an opportunity for students to take college courses and receive dual credit. As of fall of 2023, in a few short months, we will be present in 16 campuses in Clark County, and it is going extremely well. It's an opportunity to provide college access to first-gen and underrepresented students. We've been very specific in targeting those high schools that didn't have those programs to provide those opportunities to the students. It prepares them for the rigor of college, provides them with foundational math and writing skills to succeed in college. The cost of the class is $70, so essentially you can get a three-credit class for $70. And depending on how many classes you take, once you graduate from high school, you could have a full year of college completed. So it really is helpful, as you can imagine, on so many levels, and it may even allow some students to double-major when they come to a university, because then they could finish in four years. Probably asking the question, what about Washoe County? We have had many conversations with the superintendent, and we will likely be in four to six high schools in Washoe County as well, and we are identifying those high schools. are identifying those high schools now to provide this same opportunity to our high school students. What you're looking at are the shields that we use in Clark County, Centennial High School and Cheyenne High School, which were the first two high schools in Nevada to, to have the dual enrollment. So again, we're very excited about that. Moving on, you are looking, I guess what I'm going to speak about is our renovations to our athletics facilities up on campus. Many of them were dated particularly for our women student athletes, so I thought it was very important to focus on that. What you, what you're looking at is the women's swim and dive team locker room. If, if you've been up to the, the university in the Lombardi Rec, they used to have to change in those orange and yellow lockers in the, in the basement, and didn't have their own dedicated locker room facility. So this was a, a priority. Similarly, our women's track team, the track was dilapidated, so we have updated and resurfaced that track. We have also are built, in the process of building new locker rooms for our women's soccer, golf, and track teams. We are also, as you know, our women's tennis and softball teams, their facilities are at the old Minogue site off of Valley Road. They didn't have locker rooms, so we are putting some upgraded temporary locker room facilities for them. We also are in, going to break ground on a new basketball locker room and lounge facility for both men's and women's basketball teams. If you attended a football game last fall, you would have seen that we replaced the turf at Mackey Stadium. So that is new. And the football team will also be having updated locker rooms and weight rooms. So there is a lot of activity. The softball team, and you should come see there, see them. They're like 21 and 4. They're having a great season, but we've provided a new surface for their softball field as well. So a lot of things happening there. Next slide, please. You're looking, and I know you're all familiar with the Tesla building. The, the purpose for this example is, along with Tesla, we're working with Redwood Materials and many of the new advanced manufacturers throughout the state. But one of the focuses on our campus with regard to research is what we affectionately call the lithium loop. And as you know, there is lithium deposits in our state where the lithium will be mined, it will be processed here, it will be brought to the, the Gigafactory, where Panasonic and Tesla will build, or make those batteries that will be installed and used for the power walls and, and the vehicles and solar power and, and the, those things. But we're also working with Redwood Materials, which will recycle the lithium as well. So in all of the industries that are coming to this region, we work very closely with regard to placing our students as well as, as well as providing opportunities for them once they graduate. We also, you may or may not be aware, we are working with Apple. We have what's called the Digital Wolfpack Initiative. Every incoming freshman and transfer student receives a complimentary iPad Air, as well as a stylus and a keyboard. And something that was very important for me was digital equity. One of the things we learned during the pandemic is not all students had devices or had access to the internet. So this is an effort for all of our students to start in the same place, but it also develops digital agility, which allows our students, once they graduate, they will be up to speed on the technology. So regardless of the profession that they enter, they will be prepared for that. We have been invited by Apple to apply to be an Apple Distinguished University. We would be one of less than 10 in the country that would have that designation, and we hope to hear about that this summer. Next slide, please, and final slide. As I mentioned in my introductory remarks, we are celebrating our sesquicentennial, and what you are looking at is the official logo for the sesquicentennial. And one of the iconic buildings on campus is Morrel Hall, so that is what is depicted. We will begin that celebration on, on our 149th birthday, which occurs on October 12th, which was again, the groundbreaking for that business building, and we'll be celebrating events through October 12th of 2024. I also would ask you to mark your calendars for October 14th, because we are literally kicking off the celebration with a football game against the University of Nevada Las Vegas Running Rebels at, at Mackey Stadium. We certainly would like to partner with all of you on any ideas that you may have with regard to the sesquicentennial. I think it's truly a great celebration. As you can all appreciate, we have many graduates from our proud university and the community. In any way we can partner, we would like to do so. And also, I guess in closing, like to thank you, because when I was driving down Virginia Street, I saw a pennant for the University of Nevada Reno on one of the light poles, and I thought that was great, as we appreciate that. So with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I appreciate the, the time and opportunity to update you on the happenings up at the University of Nevada Reno, and happy to answer any questions that you or any members of the council may have. Thank you.
President Sandoval, thank you so much and for the presentation. Of course, it gave me goosebumps. I am Smith Ridge, Huffaker, Lenz, Pine, Clayton, McQueen, Nevada. So I'm, I'm like you, someone who is always rooting for the Wolfpack and for our region. I think one of the things is, is that, and this is really, the mayor is not able to be with us here in person today, but is here online, but she often remarks and, and shares with other mayors across the United States that vibrant cities all have incredible universities. There is just something about it that drives innovation, creativity, arts, athletics, and those things make a place a home, right? And so the city of Reno is honored to be a partner with you in the efforts that you've undertaken. And, you know, candidly, your leadership is something that is, we all want to look towards and partner with you to do the things that we know are going to create a great city. So it's an honor to have you in chambers today. Many of the things that you've presented on, I have been privileged to attend or be a part of because you've invited us into the conversation. I don't think that was always the case. I think sometimes in the historical past, we were in our lane, the university in its lane, and never too, the paths should cross. But I think that has changed with the, with the, just the acknowledgement and recognition of our deep connections to one another. So it's great to have you here. I'm going to see what my colleagues would like to chat with you about this morning. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's start with Ms. Duer.
Yeah, thank you so much, President Sandoval, for being here. It's great to see you in chambers. I'm, I grew up out of state, so I can't give all the lineage of all of the elementary schools, junior high schools, high schools, et cetera, but I am a Nevada graduate. And I'm one of your 56, that percent, that came here and stayed here, right? I absolutely love Reno and the university. I serve on two boards at the university. One is the Mackey School of Mines, which Mackey School of Earth and Vinal Science Engineering. It's still a mouthful for me. But on that board, and also the MPA Board, they started a new board about a year and a half ago. Several of us serve. And it's great to be able to support those, both undergrad and graduate programs. I'm going to be really looking forward to the future of sciences. You know, as you mentioned, Redwood Materials, I'm associated with a different company that does lithium recycling. It's just getting off the ground up in Canada, actually, and would love to come down here. So I may set up something for you, you know, to diversify. We can't put all our eggs in one basket. But the other thing I'm really pleased to partner on, I also serve on Tomwa, and we've been working together with the university on the One Water Nevada, which is a very special program. Several of us had a chance to go out of state and see some of the programs in California that are transforming water, water that has been used once reclaimed and is being used again. And we hope to implement that technology here. And so it's a really close partnership with the university. And I, I just think that's the kind of thing I love to see, where government and the university are partnering on innovative projects. So I hope we can continue that. I hope that you get your budget restoration. You know, it's very important for all education at all levels to be able to have that funding from the legislature. And it sounds like this might be the year, right? They're talking about $2 billion more than when you were in office as governor, you know, in terms of the budget, probably more than $2 billion, but, I mean, $2 million, excuse me, if I got the right.
Billion.
$2 billion, right? So I, I just, I wanted to note that for the entire time I've been on council, going on nine years now, I have pressed for the university to come across the great divide of I-80, right? And finally, we are seeing those, that movement with dormitories, with, you know, actually, all the way down in Moana, there's the Ollie, which is the, you know, the senior education process. I'm actually speaking there in a week. But to be able to infiltrate our community in various settings and to be able to go up to Tahoe, I think is remarkable. Definitely going to look for an opportunity to get up there and see that campus. I, I just think that, of all the things you mentioned, that kind of really stuck with me, what a transition. I was actually asked to teach at Sierra Nevada College. I had hesitated because of the drive, frankly. It, it is teaching a winner, and we've seen what a winner we've had. But I'm sure that even with expanded bus system, maybe that will be less arduous for students that are commuting. But I think the idea is to get them up there and keep them up there, you know, and allow them to experience Tahoe in a way that they could not in any other kind of setting. So more to say, but I just wanted to compliment you on the progress that we've seen and to encourage these collaborations with the city in whatever way that we can do. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And Mr. Vice Mayor, if I, I may, to you, through you, to Councilwoman Duer, another item that I neglected to mention, part of this connectivity is we are subletting 85 studio apartments in the Reno City Center for our graduate students. So I, again, I think you're going to start to see these collaborations, and we are also exploring opportunities on the south side of the freeway.
If I could give you one pitch, if I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, maybe you could do a partnership with Walgreens up there. It's Walgreens? See, Walgreens, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that needs some of your touch and beautification. And, you know, have I understated the, yeah, probably. It, it needs some assistance, and maybe, maybe a buyout or something would be in order. But something to bring that, make it a really effective part of the campus. Everyone needs what they got, every one of us. And so I would love to see that be upgraded as parking lot. I've talked to them many times personally, whether it's their landscaping, you know, their container plannings, the, the street sweeping, whatever it involves, I would love to see that, because that is now going to be right at your front door.
We would love that, too.
Yeah.
Councilwoman.
President Sandoval, we've spoken about it a number of times. There are some engineering challenges, of course, with being built over the freeway and, and some issues there, but it's a great idea, of course. And, and, and we've had conversations about, you know, the bowling stadium and what opportunities are there for our students and student athletes. We've had some great conversations about the internship programs. I know that when Mr. Brown was the president of the Associated Student Union at the University of Nevada, there were a lot of great collaborative processes that were begun there and continue to this day. We love having your graduates in this building. And my guess is, if by show of hands, we'd see most of the people in this room have some connection to the university. So it's, it's always good for us to continue to do those things. And I think Councilmember Duer is right. There are always opportunities. So whenever they arise, just continue as you have to include us in them, and we'll continue to reach out. You've got great people. Mr. Flores is constantly, I mean, I was there when you had the conversation about the dual enrollment programs. And a lot of folks from Southern Nevada were here and very excited about it. We've had opportunities to teach and lecture on campus, be involved with the ASUN. It's really a privilege to be a part of it. And I know that one of your biggest fans is Councilmember Taylor, so I'll turn the floor to her.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you for being here, President Sandoval. In my short tenure, I just wanted to say thank you for the collaboration that you have with the city of Reno, and also for Mr. Brown's collaboration. I know we've been meeting together, and I really like the way that we're working together and starting to have some of those conversations and the connectivity and moving forward with that. The other thing I wanted to say was, I really enjoy having your presence on the DRP, because I think it's really important, and we're doing great things there. So that is another way that we're having conversations. City Center, super excited about. Thank you for taking the lead on that. It, it's going to need a leader, and we see that with you. The last thing I would, I would just say is, we're going to have a joint NAB for Ward 5 at the University of Nevada Reno, thanks to Austin Brown in April. So we'll be looking forward to seeing you there, too. But thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And similar to the Vice Mayor's comments, I also believe a great university needs a great city, and the great city needs a great university. So we really are inextricably intertwined in terms of our destiny. So we will continue to work with you. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Kinas.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. President Sandoval, I appreciate you being here, sharing all the great things that are happening at the university. Michael, it's good to see you again. I do want to shout out that what y'all are doing and envisioning for the university is definitely going to create that city, university collaboration that we're looking to establish. And similar to the comments from Councilwoman Taylor, we'll say in my short tenure, I appreciate your openness and your invitations to come to campus and engage with students. I will ditto a lot of the remarks that were already made and add that collegiate academies is such a great opportunity to increase access to higher education and expose students who may not have considered higher education as a possibility. So I applaud your efforts there. I will also plug the Youth City Council for the city of Reno, because I am the staff liaison. So if anybody from the University of Nevada Reno would like to get exposure on being on a city board or commission, I extend that invitation to any UNR students to come join us.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions at this time? Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
It's always nice to see you, President. Thank you for coming. And I, I do look forward to your 150-year celebration. I think it's a great time to remember the history and celebrate and remind all of the history of your great university.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I look forward to our next walk. We walk the neighborhoods and the campus, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, Mr. Sandoval, President Sandoval, thank you so much again for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, city manager, city staff. Go Pack. Thank you.
Go Pack. Okay, we're on to Agenda Item B2. Is that correct?
We are moving on to Item B2, and I believe we have a couple of public commenters on this item. So if you'd like, we can open up with that. Our first commenter today is Fernando Leal. And if you are a public commenter in the Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
And Madam Clerk, so that I'm clear, is this a, a public hearing? Do I have to open a public hearing? No, this is a presentation. Actually, I'm okay. Thank you so much. Fernando, Mr. Leal, thank you so much for being here. Welcome to the dais.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff. I had to put some notes together because I left a voicemail, but I figured since I was here, I'd rather speak to you. I want to just start by introducing myself. My name is Fernando Leal. I'm currently the managing partner and president of the Renaissance Hotel. I've been developing in the downtown core and in midtown for about 17 years. I absolutely love this city. I hate going after Governor Sandoval. That's a very tough sort of act to follow, and some of the other speakers. But I'm here in support of Item Agenda B2, and specifically the equal application, let me try that again, the equal application, I'm going to go forward, of code enforcement for all business owners and for all property owners. We take a tremendous pride in maintaining our property, and we spend thousands of dollars maintaining our neighboring properties that are not owned by our organization. We do this, we are great neighbors, but it's not out of kindness, it's out of necessity. And we understand that the challenge that code enforcement has is, is very significant. I mean, I've been in this market, as I've stated, for 17 years. I came here with a desire to make this my home. I love this city. I'm not coming in here to pillage the village and go back to Chicago. And I take great pride, and I take great pride in what this city has done and what we've accomplished as a group. So I've never been in front of you to sort of ask for any special concessions, nor would I expect any. It's again, more about everybody being treated equal, and that we really do work together so that we can continue this trajectory that we're on. And certainly, I'm crazy excited, except maybe about the hotel that the university is building.
Yeah.
But there's so many great things going on. And I don't underestimate with some of you, it's, it's great to see all the new faces. I think I've established a, a great respect, and I hopefully that it's mutual with the new members. I welcome you. And I think if you talk to some of the people that have been on council, I may not necessarily agree with you, but I'll always respect your opinion and what you need to do. So I just want to state that code enforcement has a, that is a very, that's a very overwhelming job, right? I mean, I think we can go out at any given time and find things so, that could be technically violations, right? We were cited in November of '22 last year, and I exaggerate not and would provide evidence to anything that I've stated here, for literally a beer can that blew on our property, and for dog feces that was in our dog park or our dog area. And we understand. I mean, it was a little bit frustrating. It was also, we had damage to a fence where a guest had, you know, backed into it. And, you know, for me... And, you know, for me, looking around and given sort of what we've done to maintain our property, and again, those are the neighboring, it was a little bit frustrating, but we understand. So anything that we can do to support that department, streamline, empower them, you guys are the experts. We, I can't get into the specifics, but I hope you'll consider that. Thank you for your time.
And we do have one public commenter via Zoom, Gary Cecil. Mr. Cecil, if you would unmute.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Gary Cecil. I'm a downtown resident and a member of the Ward Five NAB. I'm commenting today in full support of Agenda Item B2 regarding downtown enforcement and potential updates to Titles Four and Five of the Administrative Code. While this item will likely encompass all wards, it's of particular importance to downtown residents, both current and the many more coming in the near future. Rather than a piecemeal approach responding to Reno Direct resident concerns, Item B2 recommends a holistic approach aiming directly at the underlying processes and procedures of licensing, conditioning, and the efficacy of enforcement of conditions. It will be very worthwhile to work together with all stakeholders, city staff, business, and residents. And I'm certain the residents are already primed to roll up their sleeves. I want to personally thank Lance Ferrato and Cindy Gil Blanco for their patience in responding to my individual concerns on Titles Four and Five related issues. And finally, I want to give kudos to Councilmember Taylor for being instrumental in bringing this item to the fore. Kathleen, you clearly heard and responded positively to downtown residents' concerns. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have no additional public comment.
Okay, Item B2 is a presentation. Is that Mr. Edelstein?
Good morning again. Eric Edelstein, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Ashley Turney will be presiding this presentation. But as part of our, to use Mr. Cecil's word, holistic approach that we're taking through the day today, we're looking at all of the various layers that are going to be necessary to make a meaningful impact in our downtown. And so this next agenda item is very specifically important to that topic. So I'm going to ask Ashley Turney to take this presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Turney, welcome. We don't get to see you at the lectern quite enough.
Not very often, better behind the scenes. Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Council, Ashley Turney, Chief Innovation Experience Officer, for the record. I'm here today to talk to you about some things that are essential to a safe, vibrant, and thriving community: rules. Very exciting, I know. I was often told as a child that rules are meant to keep you safe and let you know what's expected of you. And I find that that actually extends to every facet of our community. That's why our business licensing and code enforcement processes and enforcement are crucial for the quality of life for all of our residents in the biggest little city. To go over some quick numbers with the council today, I wanted to highlight code enforcement. Last year in 2022, handled over thirty-three hundred code enforcement cases. These are service requests that were submitted either by our constituents, by council members like yourself, or by staff of the city. You'll note that the largest levels of service for requests last year were in Wards Three and Five, which encompass nearly all of our downtown areas. We're currently evaluating and prioritizing the types of requests that come in and transitioning in order to allow for some more proactive measures. You'll note that we did one hundred and eight proactive measures last year. These are cases that oftentimes our hardworking code enforcement officers will find while they're already out in the field in an attempt to ensure that they are reducing the chronic nuisance before it begins. Unfortunately, our systems are antiquated, and we need to be able to streamline in order to allow for more of that. We've also been fortunate for more proactive measures to come out of our city walks by combining all of our downtown departments to identify better ways, again, to reduce the nuisance before it actually comes into play. One of the other things I'd like to note is with that streamlined enforcement, we're hoping to be able to identify areas that we can hit before they become problems. The city has also been running our motel inspection program over many years. We're continuing to look at the efficacy of this program and what the future needs we'll need. As we look, that many of our residents still call some of these motels home, and we have an obligation to ensure that they're living in decent, safe, and sanitary conditions. I'd also like to note, though it's not up here, the Parking Enforcement Division actually handled over ten thousand service requests last year. The number one, two, and three calls for service in Reno Direct, month over month consistently in nearly all wards, are related to parking issues: illegal vehicles, abandoned vehicles, and occupied vehicles. Moving on to business licensing, in 2022, there were over twenty-two thousand six hundred licenses here in the biggest little city, of which nearly six thousand of these are privileged licenses. Privileged licenses, as this council knows, are flat rate renewal fees that generally require much more staff time for evaluation. And also, we ensure that these are being evaluated within the confines of our law before bringing them to the city council. This council has long been supportive of our business community, from the measures after COVID for reignite Reno down to changes in our recent code and now allowing more live entertainment to happen within some of our businesses at different times. Also, additional funds from Your Cares and ARPA monies have been specifically dedicated to our businesses. Council has also indicated that there needs to be some of these licenses further reviewed. What we've identified is that some of these require more time, as we've noted. These specifically identify the privileged licenses. We've made some changes based off of the staff direction from council. Whenever a license that requires a CUP or an SUP comes forward, we ensure that there's now a proactive code enforcement inspection happening before this body ever sees it. We ensure that we're creating a more thriving and vibrant downtown and businesses in partnership with that. Our business licensed staff, from our techs taking applications at the front counters to our compliance officers out in the field enforcing the laws, to our special event and activity staff that permitted over eight hundred events within our area last year, this team is committed to customer service and efficiency. We're confident that we've done everything within our current laws to allow for the most customer service-focused experience. But our code is antiquated. Much of our laws have not actually been updated since the nineties. And though many of us feel like the nineties were just yesterday, to give you an idea, our code is now legally old enough to rent a car without a surcharge. So there are some updates that are necessary. We are finding that we are oftentimes hamstrung from an efficiency and service delivery methodology based off of these existing codes. Specifically in the area of privileged licenses, this council has often commented on the challenges that come before this body. These licenses are just that. They are a privilege. They have an intrinsic value, and they need to be further reviewed to ensure that conditions are enforceable and that we have something that helps businesses and residents to ensure that we're living in a very cohesive environment. As I mentioned, with privileged licenses, there are currently fifty different types of privileged licenses within our code: five zero. You can imagine that this leads to some confusion from a constituent applying for their business licensing, wondering, am I a caterer with alcohol or am I an alcohol caterer? Just to give you an example. These are things that have been updated through our code at various times without a holistic view. We, in the past, have had a tendency of part and parcelling, especially back in the nineties. And this council has been very much advocates of identifying that that's not the best way to be pro-business. So today, I'm seeking direction from this council and authorization to open up Titles Four and Five of the Reno Municipal Code. And we are hoping to streamline our process through this in order to create a better representation and a better relationship with our business community and our residents. What we're looking at today is direction from council, including some identification of privileged license concerns. We will be moving forward, if this body agrees today, with evaluation and updates of the existing code. We'll be bringing that back to council over the summer. Ideally, we get into fall and winter with stakeholder meetings and outreach. As was noted by some of our public commenters, it is absolutely essential that we have everybody at the table to discuss the issues, not only what we see as staff, but also what the community is seeing. And then ideally, we will be back before this body next spring for final recommendation and implementation. Recommended motion is that we move forward, and I'm available for questions from council.
Okay, Ms. Turney, let's start with Ms. Duer.
Yeah, thank you. I am excited to hear this because I know you are committed to fairness and equity. And that is what you're going to seek to do in this new code. Some things that have come to my attention over the years with code enforcement, and I think we heard a public comment that probably speaks to this issue, which is that our code enforcement has been complaint-driven. And what that results in is potentially onerous enforcement action on one person when somebody right next door can be doing the same exact thing, but they didn't receive a complaint. And it's almost like the eyes don't go further than the thing in front of them. I've seen it in my own neighborhood where somebody would be called upon on a right-of-way violation. You know, in other words, piling stuff in the right-of-way or having a, you know, a sandy hut in the right-of-way. Literally, someone down the street, sandy hut in the right-of-way, not cited. Literally, someone on the other side of that person with the stuff in the right-of-way, not cited. But the person either with the sandy hut that was, a complaint was called or a pile of debris, cited. So I think that is the equity issue, is trying to be fair. And so I hope in this code update that you can look at, you know, not just being complaint-driven, but actually setting up, you know, reviews of different parts of town so that, you know, this can be done, I guess, based also on priorities from the city, not just a neighbor's priority. Okay, that's one of the biggest things. The second thing is I understand that some people are required to get a business license and some aren't. And I've recently learned about this, and I just, I want to understand that more, like, why those discrepancies exist. Maybe one kind of realtor has to get a business license and one doesn't. Like, that doesn't seem very equitable. Do you have any thoughts already on that?
I do. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. That is one area that we are specifically looking at.
Really?
So the one in which Councilmember for edification of the group that we're referencing is that commercial realtors right now, they do require a license. However, they do not have to pay particular license fees based off of their revenue. We don't have a very clear history on how we got to that pace. However, it is identified that we do need to make some updates in order to have some equity. So that would be an area we'd be reviewing.
Okay. And I have one more comment, and then I'm actually, although the attorney said I didn't need to do a disclosure, I'm going to do one anyway. But first, I'll make my comment. I think that there should be some consideration for home-based businesses. You mentioned catering. It could be professional services. It could be any number of things that are run out of a home versus run out of a storefront. And usually, people that are running businesses out of a home don't have the wherewithal, capital necessarily, or even the size of business to justify renting a secondary space, right? They don't need to. It fits at home. We've seen more and more work-at-home stuff with COVID. And I just really think that we should take a look at that while you're evaluating things and see if there should be a differential in terms of rates or requirements. It's just something I think you should look at in terms of disclosure.
Please pause for a minute, Ms. Clerk, and allow Ms. Duer to read her disclosure.
Yeah, I don't have one prepared, but what I do want to disclose is I have a home-based business. And I could have, you know, I could pay to have an external business, but I have enough space, and it works very well. But I also know that most of us, the majority of us, have some kind of business, whether it's in-home or out of the home. And I think that I wanted to get a reading from our attorneys as to whether, you know, we can properly discuss this and make recommendations at some point. You know, do you have an opinion, Mr. Attorney? It's not just about alcohol.
Yeah, so we did in the disclosure, it's in your email?
I have that one, but that is really about alcohol. And this is broader. You know, this is about sixteen thousand licenses.
Right, so, yeah. Again, just to tie it back to the Agenda Item talks about, you know, privileged businesses and downtown enforcement. In terms of the fact that you have a business, again, whatever comes out of this is not going to impact your business specifically more than any other business.
Okay.
So there's an exception in the law that says that if that's the case, then you're fine.
Okay, well, that's what I was looking for. I thought that, I wanted to disclose that I have them, but I think I'm fine to discuss this and vote on it, just like everyone with a business, because it doesn't affect our business specifically. So I just wanted to get that on the record and, you know, in case there were questions about that. So thank you.
Ms. Duer, thank you. It is, I think, incumbent upon all of us to acknowledge the ethical concerns of serving in public office.
Right.
And so it was kind of you to check in with the city attorney's office. Of course, ethics are an art, not a science, so it can be sometimes those gray areas become an issue. But thank you for flagging it for the body.
Yeah.
I know that there are people who are very interested in this topic, and so thank you for that.
Well, and especially one more thing. We will be setting a budget, and part of the budget is licensing fees and other things besides the rules that affect businesses, so correct.
Thank you for making those comments, and we'll get back into the item now at this time. I'm going to go now to Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Turney. Three things. First thing, I want to start off with Reno Direct. Love them. They are amazing. Every single time that I have sent them something or sent somebody their way, they are efficient, they're courteous, and they're responsive. And I know it's not a very big team. Thank you very much and all the Reno Direct people out there. Second thing, business license. My comments are, whatever we do, I'd like to make it easier. This is some of the things I said yesterday. Simpler for businesses. Want to thank Mr. Vice Mayor for his business, little business partnership that is available for folks. I also was interested in maybe a pop-up business license. I know we've heard some complaints over the years of people that don't do a real business, what that might look like. And maybe that's something we can talk with Mr. Edelstein at a later time, how that works into the downtown. As far as code enforcement, I am absolutely passionate about cleaning up downtown. And that means trespassing, signage, landscape and aesthetics. All of the ordinances that we have get enforced down there because I think it's essential to what we just heard of people coming into our downtown and wanting to invest and wanting to live there. So I trust that you and your team are going to make all of those things happen, which is no easy feat, I'm sure. But I want you to know that I am behind you one hundred percent for everything that we need to do to make a clean and safe downtown. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments at this time? Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. So yesterday, we established that there was a change of plans to drop these budget hearings from three days to two. And then today, you know, while it's always good to hear from President Sandoval and have more or less a policy workshop on this item, we're not doing budget until later, you know, an hour in, hour and a half in. And I just want to say, because the manager and the mayor set the agenda, I think it's a missed opportunity. My colleague, my new colleague just mentioned Reno Direct. I think it would have been good to go through each department. Sometimes there is a reason to not do those in a budget year, and sometimes there are reasons to do them in a budget year. And this year, with three new members, it would have been good to have each department, it would have been good to have each department, not necessarily make a pitch for what they wanted a flat budget, but to familiarize the new people and give us, who've been on a while, a reminder of where people like the Reno Direct team sit, to understand how it all integrates in, particularly as we move off into, you know, new policy direction setting like here on the code stuff. So I just, I'm going to object again to the way this budget year has been arranged and the brevity of it in focus and span and time. But on this item, which seems to be all over the place, presentation discussion, potential direction regarding code enforcement downtown, and updates to Title IV and V regarding privileged licenses, I'm confused. I don't know if we're talking about a strategy to downtown or if we're talking about the Realtor's ongoing issue that each Realtor has to get their own license, or can they work under their brokerage? You know, are they independent contractors? And I also heard parking, which is a, you know, a pet topic of mine that I worked hard to get a policy spot in our master plan on as an implementation item. So I think if you open up IV and V, you're going to have hornet's nest of complexity intertwined into Title 18. And I just don't see that you presented enough to understand where you think you want to go. And you said in November or September, summer of 2023, you're going to come back with an analysis. I just, I think this, I don't know what this is doing. You know, code enforcement is one issue, and maybe it could have been two agenda items. So you've got code enforcement, we have an audit. Presumably, a lot of things operationally in that audit are being addressed and managed through, you know, the city manager who put that function, I think, in the manager's office. And hopefully, it's doing what it needs to do, okay? That's that. Then opening up Title IV and V, whether it's, you know, the Realtors or the caterers with alcohol, the alcohol with the caterer, you know, what are we trying to answer, I think, on that? Just because it's old, you know, maybe there are some antiquated things that you're going to have in there, land uses that fallen out and not. But is this downtown focused? Are we trying to give code enforcement better tools? It's just, I think that this is a real big topic, and I'm not entirely sure you know, you're presenting to me to understand what you want to go on. Because I think if we're dealing with the alcohol and catering, catering and alcohol, we're not addressing maybe a lot of other issues. So I think the targeting is going to be very important and standing back at each set and saying, what are we trying to accomplish here with this effort? This is the downtown action plan. So if the focus is on downtown, why not a staff analysis, a five-year retro analysis of how we've been implementing this? Or, you know, I just, I don't really understand. So five things you're trying to accomplish. You're saying streamline some of these 50 privileged licenses.
So five things we're trying to accomplish. We are looking to modernize our code, getting rid of things that are antiquated. For example, coin-operated amusement rides are still listed as a specific license that you have to obtain. We're looking for streamlined process for application. We're looking for change in timelines of renewals. One thing that we often hear from the public is, when is my license actually due? It's due on a particular date, but then there's a 60-day grace period, and then you can have another 60 days. So you actually have a point in time in which your license can lapse within 180 days and still be active, and we don't have them on the books. So we're looking for efficiency there. We're additionally looking for better tools, as you yourself just mentioned, for code enforcement and compliance officers to be able to enforce this code that this council has adopted. And the last thing that I would note is that this council has identified a strategic priority as efficient service delivery. Currently, I would say, our staff is doing the best they can with what they have. We are not as effective as we can be because of these older systems that are in place.
Well, could I follow up on?
I'll come back to Ms. Breckus, one second, please. Ms. Turney, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I understood the assignment. So I understand that what we're here in these last day and a half now to talk about is really a more holistic approach about the policy-based decisions that we will take as a council as it relates to our budget. And our budget certainly has elements that are involved in economic development, downtown revitalization, our business licensing. At the end of the day, I think what we're going to leave and take away from these several days that we'll spend together is sort of, A, an understanding of the budget, its process, its nuance. Will I know every single jot and tittle of every page of everything? No. But what I will know, and what I do think is the high-level takeaway, is that we have a direction which is a very exciting one. And quite frankly, it is refreshing in its nuance because it allows us as a board and a body not to reach into the minutia of some particular wicket, but it says, we're going to chart a course for Reno's vibrant future, right? I am someone who believes very positively that the city of Reno is engaged in a renaissance period. We've gone through a pandemic. We have some changing economic climate. But we are ready and poised to just go and have a great future. So it's that forward-looking thought process. So as I evaluated your presentation materials and the thoughts leading up to it, I had a couple of thoughts that I think would be important for the body to think about. One is, sort of to the newer members, of course, your office and the Office of Policy and Strategy onboarded all of those folks in a way that was very different than when I came onto the body. So this claim that somehow these are supposed to be moments of education-based outreach for our colleagues, I think is insulting to our colleagues who are working hard to learn a bit more about the city. So that's the first thing I take from some of the comments that have been made. The second is, is that I know, because I've had conversations with my colleagues about their enthusiasm for the ideas being presented. So when you talk about the policy-based strategy decision about looking at these two sections of the code and saying, we haven't opened them since, I don't know, is it 1951 or?
Some sections are as late, as early as the 50s. The most robust holistic change was 1997, so 25 years.
That, to me, is anathema to the vibrancy that we're looking to create as a city, right? And so as we look at the way in which Mr. McArdle, Ms. Edelstein, and your office are starting to have synergy towards the goals that are outlined by this body and then carried forward through the staff, I think it's a very exciting time. For my part, all of those should be looked at, and we should be asking the questions about, why do DJ Trivia have certain cabaret-focused licenses? And if we look at them holistically, we don't then have to deal with the emergency as they arrive. And so Ms. Dewar's questions, I think, were very poignant and really, I think, illustrative of what the process will be undertaken. Do I know every moment or every item on those two RMCs that I want to look at? Not yet, but when you come back, I sure will. So I appreciate the thought that's gone into helping us think at a greater level and really staying at that high-level focus. I know there will be time to get into the weeds, and perhaps some of that is happening today when we talk about a specific thing that's been raised by a constituent. But I don't think that is an obstacle to your better and broader overview of it. It's, you've got to have the vision. You've got to go out and cast the vision, and with our direction, I think, we'll get there. So thank you for that. Let me see if I can come back. I know, Ms. Dewar, you said you had follow-up questions? Okay, Ms. Ebert? Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Breckus, I think you had some comments.
Yeah, I just, I really am trying to wrap my head around this. And I'll just say, you know, I have had code enforcement functions under me as a supervisor for another city. I've worked closely with them over years because they're in the planning departments. I was in this organization in 1998 when there were only two code enforcement officers. So I do understand the function. You know, presumably, a lot of what code enforcement has is Title 18, which is the zoning and land development ordinances. And those have been updated substantially. And there's cleanup that's been represented by staff that needs to happen. So one would presume they have a clean set of ordinances or someone is highlighting specific pinpointed problem areas for them. We have an audit, so operationally, presumably, we know what's needed there, you know? And, you know, they have a department ask, I presume, in there, and, but, you know, we're not going to get into that. So Title IV and V, which integrates so much with Title 18. When you open up Title IV and V and do this analysis, we haven't had an audit of that function that's global or an outside performance evaluation that we're relying upon. Do we have one of those?
We do not at this time. Part of, as council may recall, the current practice in order to open up an ordinance only comes from two places. Either there's legislative change that happens at the state in which requires us to update our code, or the second one would be a council member bringing forward their request to the manager to review and put on the agenda. This is coming forward based off of multiple council members at many meetings.
I'm not asking about the process, and you said multiple council members, so maybe other people have more of an idea. I'm just trying to understand, are you going to have an outset, outside set of eyes, who knows business license specializes with helping cities diagnose the problem? Because sometimes I've found, you know, like Title 18, you bring in a code expert, they look at your code, they have a lot of conversations with, you know, from code enforcement to the fees people and diagnose the problems and what you need to fix. What's the first step? If we say go, what's the first step to analyze and bring back to us September a problem statement?
The first step is to obtain a consultant to help us with rewrite, yes.
Okay, so you are going to have, that's part of the plan?
That's part of the plan.
Okay, yeah. And that's, that is helpful to understand that they'll be having conversations. It's not public engagement yet, but it is very worker-user understanding. And that's where all these things, the caters and the problems. And then, do you also think that analysis that'll be regulatory will also be operational and say, you know, the 120 days, that sort of thing? You're going to bring in those statements? And so some may be code, but some may be operational changes that need to happen within the staffing environment, you know, the work environment.
Correct, yes. That's part of what my office specializes in, is identifying the operational changes that need to go in consistently. And so we want to ensure that we're rolling those out with understanding full ramifications of code changes. So code will not be changed before we understand how to implement.
Okay, and I'll have a follow-up question, too.
Ms. Breckus, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, well, yesterday we had, and I think I, you know, it's been a longstanding concern of mine. And Mr. Taylor did a good job on the finance perspective, wanting to balance the statutory confines we have on business licenses. Is the analysis going to be a part of that, too?
The analysis will likely start after this council has adopted your budget. This is preliminary discussions. As you saw with Mr. Taylor yesterday, there's a $6.9 million delta in which we still can continue to change fees. So that will come out through process of evaluation, is should the fees be changed based off of service requests, what's coming in from a staffing level?
And then what is this consultant, you know, budget request? Where does it live? How much is it for?
We have estimated $50,000 for the consultant for the rewrite.
For the rewrite, not just the diagnostic?
They'll be involved in that process, correct. That's the preliminary estimates that we've been getting. However, we've not identified anyone yet because this council hasn't adopted this item.
It seems a little light to me. I think a code diagnostic is probably 20, 25, but, okay, great. I'll look for Phase 1 in the summer and see what, you know, what the evaluation is. And, you know, then we have to target the code revisions over time, I would presume.
Ms. Turney, I think it's important. I think Councilmember Breckus identifies an important component. I'm glad that, in their support there for it, because the ability to work with outside consultants, sometimes I'm challenged by it because I always wonder, we go out and hire consultants, and then they do a thing and it sits on a shelf. And I know from experience that that's not the take that you intend with this. And so I like, Councilmember Breckus, worry that you've undershot the mark a little bit about the cost, but I could be open to it. I don't know what it costs, to be honest with you, but it seems a little light. So I want to make sure you have enough runway. I also wanted to bring the mayor into the conversation. She's with us today, and I'm sure she has thoughts. Madam Mayor, do you want to have the floor?
I do, thanks so much, I appreciate it. First of all, thank you, Ms. Turney, for bringing this forward. I think if you own a business, there's no confusion on what we're trying to accomplish here, something that I think we've desperately needed, you know, for years, actually. So I kind of feel like if not now, then when? Because we're always being reactive instead of proactive. I think we saw it with DJ Trivia, to Vice Mayor's point, made a very good point there. I think some of my questions would be, what tools exactly do you think we can trigger that would be particularly helpful? You know, it sounds like you're going to bring on a consultant, which I think is a good idea, particularly. And then, the other thing I would just stress, really, to, like, a massive public engagement aspect in listening to our businesses because they come across incredibly difficult circumstances that sometimes we never even know exist. So I'd really like to see some thought put into a lot of public engagement and a public campaign for businesses to be at the table. What do you think that tools look like for you?
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor. Some of the tools that we would be looking for actually help this body to govern better in this space. Some of the updates we would be looking for would be enforceable conditions that are equitable. We do find that there's a lot of inconsistencies when it relates back to some hours of operations as it relates from existing SUPs. So we want to make sure that our business license overlay aren't conflicting with any of those. We also would recommend, based off of this body's direction at previous meetings, that we take a deeper dive into privileged licenses. As I mentioned, those do require a lot more staff time than a standard home-based business. As Councilmember Dewar mentioned, there's a difference between what the processing of someone who is selling stationery through Etsy out of their garage versus someone who is opening a bar and restaurant and tavern and privileged additional bottling. So we want to ensure that we are spending our resources in the most appropriate way. Right now, it's spread evenly, and we know that the workload isn't even. So those are some of the tools that we would look for. Additionally, back to your point, Councilmember Taylor, you mentioned about pop-up businesses. We spend a lot of time for compliance officers going out to evaluate temporary business licenses that happen at special events. So we'd be evaluating Chapter 5.13 as well as updates in order to provide better streamlined opportunities for our events folks. And that adds back to that vibrant community that we're looking for.
All right, and what, can you just identify some ways that you'll be business-friendly? That's something that I hear all the time. There seems to be a lot of complaints in the business community. What does that look like? Because I want to be very careful that we're not making it more cumbersome. What does that look like?
That's a great point, something that we hear often. I personally find that our application process is clunky and difficult. We have, my staff has listened to me in diatribe for a long time. I feel as if we have a lot of self-inflicted wounds that we bring forward. We require uploads of documentation that the state suggested maybe we need them, but we don't actually need them for some of our laws. So our goal is to make it as streamlined as possible. Again, if you are a small home-based business with lower gross receipts, we likely don't need the same level of scrutiny that we do for someone who's coming in with something more complex. And to your point, Madam Mayor, we want to ensure that we are doing a very thorough, transparent process with our business partners in the community. We will make sure that we have community meetings specific to different types of arenas and different stakeholder areas, so that way everyone is at the table. Because we do want to hear from our business community, something beyond anecdotal. We know where it hurts, but we don't necessarily know where it hurts for them. So we're actively engaging and listening in that space also.
Great, thanks so much.
Okay, Ms. Turney, I think, let's see, Ms. Ebert, I think, is up first.
I just had a quick question. I'm sorry if somebody already asked this and I missed it. Will this address some of the issues that were kind of brought out in that internal audit about code enforcement?
Some of these will help. Part of what we're working on through the code team right now is identifying, many of the things in the audit were operational, but some of the operational pieces tie back to antiquated code. And so we're hopeful that with businesses being able to be more streamlined, we're looking for great partnerships from those businesses with the understanding that staff will have some more time for more equitable enforcement of those codes. So it'll be twofold.
That's a good point, Councilmember Ebert. I think it's important because this kid did work very hard, and the audit was an important touchstone for this area. It is incumbent, of course, upon you to now take those findings and move forward with it. So I think it's a very good point, Ms. Dewar. I think you're up next.
Well, it's more of a global comment and not so much about the specific subject matter, but just the fact, and maybe, you know, I do this sometimes to our city manager, I think it is very appropriate, and I'm pleased to see, that if any department is planning to initiate a big initiative during the budget year, I think this is exactly the time that you should be bringing it to us. So if you're going to expend money, hire consultants, do a thing, no matter what it is, whether it's build a thing, do a thing, analyze a thing, I think that we should be exposed to it now. Like, this is the time. So I love hearing from the departments, and I always encourage you to do that, you know. I even asked you before this meeting, are you going to have the departments? And you said, we're going to handle it differently, okay. I too love to hear from the departments, but I love the emphasis on a specific initiative that we can look forward to in this year wrapped into the budget. Thank you.
Ms. Dewar, I think I want to just add my own thoughts to yours because I understand what you're saying, but I have maybe a different take on it. And my concept is more like, the department ask concept seems insane to me. I don't know why, as an organization, we buy positions or things that don't really work rather than approach it from a global lens. Meaning, I think historically, what we have done is we approached the budget in sort of a Hunger Games-style contest between departments, meaning that then, we are then at the dais playing Solomon, right? And I'm not sure that that is. I think that, for me, what I see in this presentation and the time that we spent yesterday and today is different than past budget cycles, is it's like a broader vision, a bigger vision casting. And when we dream big and are willing to fail, that's when we'll have the sweet spot. So mine is a little bit, a little one-off from yours. I think departmental asks are important, and with the binder, I think some of that is apparent, right? And so I don't necessarily think that, for me, I will take some of my conversations with each department offline, and I would rather us have bigger visionary concepts here than have that kind of Hunger Games-style effect. Because that's how I've felt in past things. Your point is well-taken, and in no way am I saying it is the incorrect route to go. Your point is well-taken, and in no way am I saying it is the incorrect route to go, but I think there's some happy medium. I think yesterday, when Ms. Kosky was with us, I even said something like, "I appreciate that this year, we are doing it a little differently, and we're talking about it from sort of economic development and budget, and we're seeing the inner workings of it fit together." Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would like to respond when you do.
Oh, yeah, it's a conversation, right? So that's why I'm just trying to add.
So what I've found to be most effective in budgeting is that you have essentially a matrix, and you have both line items, which is what you're saying, not so keen about looking at line items, and then you have programs that are cross-functional sometimes. Ms. Turney's gonna be talking to people across the organization, not just in one specific area, and we heard from Ms. Kosky, same thing, she doesn't do it alone, she's laying out a vision, and many departments are touched. So, I have always done budgeting this way, both at the line item level and at the program level, this is what this is. At the same time, I would have liked to hear, I'll just admit, during this budget process, I would like to hear from our police chief. We have a brand-new police chief, I'd like to hear her vision for the coming year. It's the biggest ask in the budget, whether we can fund it or not, you know, we have already determined, we're probably at a pretty flat budget, but pretty being the operative word, there will be some positions, I assume. And so, I would have liked to hear from her, as a new manager, I got a new team, got some new ideas, maybe has a cross-functional thing. For example, it might have been about, we wanna communicate more what the police department's doing, we're gonna be working with the comms and other groups to effectuate this thing. Now, she hasn't been very long in the seat, and I'm sorry I'm picking on her, but it's just an example, because it's the biggest ask in the budget, and it does cross-departments. And so, you know, it touches everything from code enforcement, homeless services, housing, safety, you know, bikes, speed limits, everything. And so, that's what I wanna explain, is just, I like to get a big picture from the department heads and understand where they're going and what they're thinking about, and I also like to hear the program perspective of, how does this touch many parts? So I hope I've explained it.
I think so, it's like the hybrid of the things. I mean, ultimately, my point in having this conversation with you, which is what this budget workshop is, it's a conversation, is that we put money into things that are our priority, right?
Exactly.
But we do it in a way that can be successful.
Exactly.
And so I appreciate your thoughtfulness. Mr. Manager, would you like to weigh in? I imagine that you have some thoughts, and make sure you bring the mic real close, because our comms team is telling me today our mics are having a little bit of issues.
No, I don't think it's the microphones that have the issues, I think it's me that has the issue. The, look, I have every confidence that Chief Nance, who is sitting right here, could come up and wow all of us with a presentation and her thoughts on Reno Police Department and where it's headed in the future. We were, this year, during budget workup, in a unique space, where we were in a period of transition.
Right.
Chief Nance is digging into the goings-on of the police department and the, all the many things, but she was not part of the team that worked up that budget request, and so, I don't know that it would necessarily be fair to have her come and defend it. The other thing that we're, we are trying to do this year, is as Vice Mayor Reese pointed out, is say, through the strategic plan, through the lens of the strategic plan, and the things that this body has identified as, as all your many priorities, you all right? Build for you, build for you a set of programs that are effective and can move the organization and the community forward. I believe that we've done that in these workshops, both through the new run at the CIP and the maintenance function that Director Kosky presented yesterday, and this is just one facet of how we believe we can improve conditions on the ground to spur economic development and improve conditions in downtown.
Well, it was a compliment, just in case anybody missed that. What I was trying to say is, this is what I appreciate, is hearing about a new initiative, it's not necessarily departmental-oriented, it's across the organization, and that's what I like to hear about in the budget.
And I think I would say, too, you know, the Hunger Games reference strikes a chord with me, in that, all the many department heads, of course, have their priorities, and they are competing priorities, and so part of the job of developing a budget and bringing you recommendations, is separating out what we believe we can afford, what we believe will be effective, and what are the more emergent priorities of the organization.
Yes, I like.
And so, that is the approach that we're taking, rather than pit colleagues against one another in terms of...
Well, I'll say one final thing, all budgets, I mean, always resources are limited, the president of the university was just here, he was cut by, what did he say, 12%? He had to hold positions vacant, he had to figure that out, and who, which positions would be vacant? What teaching they weren't gonna fill? What staffing positions they weren't gonna fill? Are they gonna do parking enforcement or teach kids in class? I mean, those are the tough decisions he had to make, and he's hoping to retrieve it, but every organization that does budgeting, there's never enough to do everything, and so, we can, because we have a movie called Hunger Games, we have a vision of what that looks like, but, but your job is to sort that out and help us through this process, and I think you're doing it, so.
Well, Ms. Dewar, I took it as a compliment, I took your comment as a compliment, I truly did. Let me see if anyone is in the queue. Ms. Breckus, did you have comments?
Just, does Mr. Martinez wanna go first? You haven't spoken, go ahead.
I apologize, I didn't see Mr. Martinez.
Oh, no worries, yeah, I was probably a little late, to raise my hand, so I appreciate you offering the floor. Thank you, Ms. Turney, for offering the presentation and sharing with us all the work that has initially already gone, gone in, gone into this process, sorry, I was just collecting my thoughts. And so I just wanted to say, as the representative for one of the wards that has the most code enforcement, I appreciate you working with Director Woodley to address efficiently some of those cases that have come up in the ward. I know we're specifically talking about downtown area, so I appreciate that we just bring to light that some of the things, if we were to open up Chapter 15 and Chapter 4, will have an effect on the whole city and not just downtown, so just bringing that thought into the mix. I'll also say that getting us involved this early in the process, I think it's important to show us what you have thought about, and how you're gonna involve, not just the people that may be impacted by these decisions, but also community members, and having some stakeholder meetings and outreach planned for the winter, I think that's very important. And then before I close, I do just wanna say that despite sometimes being used to lodge certain lines of questioning to departments, I find myself that you've given me the information that I need to understand where you're coming from and where your arguments are, so, thank you for sharing that and for helping us understand where your vision is for this department.
Thank you.
Ms. Breckus?
Yeah, you know, I just wanna go in a little bit about your, you know, discussions about when you have a special use permit, and you have different conditions, you know, and so on. That thread, line of thought, in my view, gets really quickly to what Title 18's doing, and you get, I think we've done Title 18, you know, but it can inform operationally, and I like to talk from examples all the time. So, when I started as a junior planner doing cases in Reno, or in Albuquerque, code enforcement used to write in and comment on every single case that was taken to Planning Commission and City Council, and obviously, a lot of us, through Title 18, a lot of our work now doesn't go there, it goes administratively, or it's just a matter of right, but when conditions can be applied under the code framework, you know, maybe the fixes code enforcement needs to say, you know, sometimes generic language, "Don't write an enforceable condition to the operation of this business." You know, that's maybe where I would stop it, or just diagnose what Title 18 needs to do. And I once saw a code, a planning case, condition of a planning commission specify that a bar or a restaurant up in the university could sell croissants and, you know, muffins, but then the question was, "What about donuts?" I mean, it's just that specific, that poorly tasked to hurt, poorly written to make life hard for code and business, and, you know, that may be more operationally, that code will, you know, remind those who write those conditions, "Don't do it," but I just, I am concerned about going into Title 18. The other thing is, on the budget materials, fees and permits are 10% of our general fund revenue, and I don't know what they're gonna be with what Matt Taylor brought yesterday, because that's $6 million delta, but if some of that folds in, it's gonna be, you know, could be as much as 11%. So, you know, we're gonna go out and do this public engagement, everyone's gonna say, "I don't wanna pay a business license," you know, "Give it to me for free." But if one-tenth of our general fund is coming from business licenses, I'm really gonna look for the recognition through this process that it's a revenue source, because when I came on and started to really know the ins and outs of this budget, I was told by those who manage the finance department, it's the only discretionary area you really have, because you got C-tax that's volatile, and you got property tax that's capped, so there's, there are always keepers of that revenue source in the organization, and I hate to see this set up to be, you know, a streamlining, and then we lose the revenue. So I just, I wanna share that, I don't, I think, you know, people are saying, "Hey, you're sharing too much and being too, you know, instructive to the rest of the body," is, you know, 10% is 10%. And then the last point is, I wanna know where code enforcement's gonna live, because it's, having a city manager's office, 120 people, is not viable. We, I mentioned this last year, a lot of concerns, and then dispatch folded into them. And I've seen a lot of models where code enforcement could live. I've seen code enforcement live in police departments, and I've seen it live in development services, I've seen it live with parking and business license, we need an answer real soon where code enforcement is gonna live, particularly because it is, we've done the audit, you know, we've made the reforms, so, what's the answer, Mr. Manager? When are we gonna know where code enforcement's gonna live? Because code enforcement does not live in city managers' offices. I, you know, you can show me a lot of organizational structures, but I've never seen it in a city manager's office.
I appreciate the input on where code enforcement could live. As you said, we did the audit, and we're going through the process of curing a number of those findings, and I believe we committed to coming back this year, maybe a couple times, with updates on where we're at in that process.
Good points, Ms. Breckus. Are there any other questions from the body? Ms. Ebert, the floor is yours.
Yeah, just to circle back again about the audits, I know that you said it's just gonna be kind of partially addressed, just through the process of updating the code, but if we can, just kind of loop that audit in more, and use this process, update the code, to address those findings that were in the audit, I think that this is a great opportunity to do that simultaneously, if we could do that at the same time, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you for that feedback, that is something that staff is evaluating, other sections of code that do need to be updated for a more efficient and effective process, so that will be something that will come back before this body later this year.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the Ward Five member for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to direct staff to open and amend titles four and five in their entirety.
Let me get a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, a second by Ms. Dewar. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Turney.
Thank you.
Take five minutes, just to let finance department kinda set themselves up.
Well, hold on a second, because I actually think we're gonna take a bit longer than that. It's now 10 till noon, we have an opportunity to take a break. Let me first turn to the city manager. The departmental items that remain are under the Redevelopment Agency Board, they're essentially E4. Is that what we have remaining today?
That's what we have remaining today.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a break until 12:30, that gives everyone the chance to reset, stretch your legs, have a bite, or use the facilities, and we'll be back together in about 45 minutes. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk? Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we're getting close to being ready back together. Can I just ask, before we get started, the computer, I have refreshed it a number of times, but it is not getting me to the next item, so I'm wondering if this is...
I haven't, it's my, I haven't yet made the next item live, so I'm waiting for the timestamp to start the meeting on that item.
I'm watching, yeah.
You're always keeping me on my toes, Vice Mayor, thank you.
No, never. We're ready to go when Mr. Thornley takes the dais.
Meeting at 12:35, and for the record, at this time, Mayor Shivi is absent. So we're moving on to Item E41, which is a presentation by Mr. Edelstein.
Okay, I think, let me first clarify something, the departmental item that's identified here is E4, we've gotta reopen the Redevelopment Board first.
We're gonna do E43 first.
Hold on one second, we're gonna do E43 as the first part, and then E41 and E42, but my question is for our legal counsel, Mr. Shipman or Mr. Hall, do we need to open each one individually, or can the items be opened all at the same time? What is your preference?
Our preference is that you open them individually.
Okay, so what we're gonna do then is, I'm gonna come back to you, Madam Clerk, I'll have you direct us through the opening parts of the E items, and then we're gonna go out of order, we're gonna do E43 first, so that's Edward 43 first, and then we're gonna move to E41 and E42. I believe that we can open those two at the same time, because the action for them is not, is not...
We could potentially start paying back the loan to RDA two in 2026 and have it fully paid off in 27. When we go over to RDA two, it was established in 2005 and inspires in 2035, so it's only 30 years. This one is not eligible to be extended any longer because it was formed after 1991 and the rules changed. So the rules are it's at the 30 year max. There are seven different areas which include Cabela's, the baseball district and Park Lane Mall. And the property tax revenues fully cover the payment of the baseball agreement here in RDA two. The baseball agreement is payment for the construction of the stadium and the retail development that was done there. RDA two does include a small bond that was for Cabela's for improvements out at Cabela's and that matures in 2035, which is the last year that this RDA exists. So this is just showing you the the small bond that's out there. It does mature in June of 2035, like I mentioned, and the original amount was only 655,000. And the bond payments on this are around 35,000 a year, very small. This gives you an idea again of this just shows you just the redevelopment agency two area, all those seven areas that are kind of spread out around the city. It's not concise like RDA one is. When you look at the general fund in RDA two, the beginning fund balance projected, well, the beginning fund balance at this current year after the audit is 3.6 million dollars. We anticipate advert lure revenues is going to come in around 5.4 million. And then we have the baseball agreement that's 1.1 million going out. And then we'll have an ending fund balance of around 8 million dollars at the end of this fiscal year. So next fiscal year, based on just paying the baseball agreement out of here, it goes down to 1 million dollars and continues at that 1 million dollar level throughout the end of that agreement through 2043. So at the end of next year, we would have 12.7 million dollars in here because it's been accumulating. We haven't really been able to do much with it because it was loaning money to RDA one until we kind of knew how those districts were going to pick up. We haven't had a lot of money in these as we've moved through them the last few years, but they're really starting to pick up. So in the RDA two debt fund, again, this only has enough money in here just to pay that small debt that we have. The 40, it's about 48,000 dollars in debt service. So that's all that this debt service two really exists of. When you look at the tax increment projections, so for RDA two, starting in 23, that very small little debt that you see that is, that does include the baseball agreement for this chart, plus that little Cabela's debt, and it does go all the way to the end until 2023, until 2035. So I'm bringing back that first one when I was gonna, where I mentioned I was going to come back to that little piece on the end of RDA one. And I just put these on the same slide so that you could see and lined up their years for you. RDA two is going to end in 2035. When RDA two ends, RDA one would need to pick up that debt for the baseball agreement going forward. So that's the little bump you see in the line on the end as RDA one picks that up in year 2036 and then out through the end in 2043. This is my last slide for redevelopment, just to give you an idea of what's available to look at for projects and things as you start to talk about what you want to see in projects for the areas now that there is some funding coming in and Eric comes up to discuss some of that. So the green bar is RDA two cash flow and the blue bar is RDA one cash flow. So as I mentioned before, right now in 2023, we're looking at about 8 million dollars currently cash available in RDA two. And that's your big bar on the left hand side. And RDA one has nothing. It doesn't have anything available because it's still just kind of eking along. 24, it still doesn't have anything. 25, and then in 26, we can actually start paying back some money. And then we actually get back the bond deposit that we have on file. We have cash set aside for a bond deposit as well. That's 2 million in RDA one. And so once that is paid off, then that comes back and you see that bar coming in. And then you see that increments start to grow every year after that that's available. So this would be the cash available after everything else is paid, not anticipating any projects on this at all. So you do see that in 2024, you'll have about 5 million dollars in RDA two, about five and a half million dollars in RDA two the next year. And then each year you have a little bit more as the property tax increases in those areas. And then in RDA one, it really starts to grow in 28 and 29, once we get beyond those bonds. And then there's tax increment available in those years as well. And with that, I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, let's, let me just switch screens. Ms. Van Buren, thank you because quite frankly, that's the most comprehensive analysis I've seen in my four years on the body of the RDA and I appreciate the depth of it. So let's get started here. It looks like Ms. Duer, are you in?
Thank you. I thought it was really good too, especially where you have them side by side. So helpful. And the maps were really good today as well. Just a really quick question, and you answered one, which was, when is baseball over? But I do think it'd be good to to speak to our members. I mean, normally that would come out of RDA one, I would assume. But there was no money, right? And so we were paying out a general fund.
There's actually, thank you for the question, Councilmember Duer. It's, it's actually, there's actually a nexus between RDA one and RDA two. It actually can be funded by either one because of the location of it. It originally was planned to be out of RDA one. RDA two came on and prospered a little faster. And as you know, you've been here a while, we did supplement from the general fund for a while for that baseball agreement up until I believe about 2017, 2018. And then there were enough funds that coming in from the increment where we didn't have to. But potentially can be paid by either one.
Okay, and then another question was, okay, on the baseball. So in 2023, you showed a bar chart that showed we had a lot in 2023.
Yes.
Could you say that again about that? Why?
In 2023, that is the, that's the amount of cash we have on hand for RDA two right now. Because RDA two has came on a lot faster. But we hadn't really done a lot with it because we were in that transition where we were trying to figure out how to pay RDA one's debt. We were going to restructure it, how that was going to work. Weren't sure exactly how fast the increment was coming in for projections at that time because it went from so small to really starting to grow. And so that's what that bar is. It's, we, at the end of this year, we have about 8 million dollars in RDA two, really nothing in one that's available. And then after next year, we'll have another about 5 million dollars in RDA two.
And this was what I was wondering, and if you could show that chart again. Does it, it aggregates, right? I mean, it continues to accumulate.
If you don't spend it. On this particular chart, I did have it aggregated when I first did it, did this chart, which is interesting that you asked that. But I thought it would be better. I went back and redid this chart because I think it's more important to see what cash you have available each year. So this would be each year. So right now, we have 8 million dollars that's available in 2023 for RDA two. Next year, we will have an additional four and a half million. And then the next year after that, another four and a half million. So this is going to show you each year about how much you have to look at to spend.
And then Mr. Edelstein is going to come and tell us what he'd like to do with 8 million dollars? Is that it?
We'll see.
Okay.
I think he will. He has plans.
I gotta watch the movie. Okay.
But if, and to answer your question, if you aggregate all this up, if you were to look at all of this revenue, and this is one of the things that we discussed when council went ahead and extended RDA one an additional 15 years. When we originally were talking about paying the debt, council agreed that we could loan over from RDA two and we extended it 15 years. This is the benefit that you're going to see by doing this. With RDA one, the cash flow, if you add all that cash flow up, you're at about 90 million dollars.
That's what I wanted to know.
And just if you look at RDA two, it ends up about 90 million dollars as well in a different way. Not related at all, but that's just how it turned out.
So just to wrap this up, going forward, I think it'd be great to hear not just the annual budget, but like a big projection, 90 million dollars. We should think about how we want to effectively reinvest that in the community. So.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, you're next in the queue. Ms. Breckus, do you wish to speak?
Yeah.
Well, hold on one second because I'm just not seeing you in the queue. So if you would log in.
No, I'm in. I see myself in top of the queue. I see my, yeah.
It might be under the different number.
No problem. I'll try to get there. Let's start with Ms. Taylor. I don't see it, and so I'll ask Madam Clerk to come help me.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vicki. If you haven't heard, I'm one of the newest members here. So I'm wondering if we could just back up a little bit and talk about the history of the RDAs and maybe some of the general rules at a high level. I know I can probably meet with you later. But what happens after they expire? How did they get here? What can the money be used for? If you could just give me some information.
The RDAs are created so that you receive any new tax increment in that area. So once you create an area, say you're making 100 million dollars in property tax in this one area, we create that as an RDA area and that's the new baseline, that 100 million that's already coming in. Because that property tax is being divided amongst all the other agencies, Reno, the county and the school district. Once you create that RDA area, anything that comes in tax increment wise above that base comes to the city. So that's really where we get that RDA money from is any new growth in that area or the, the growth of what already exists there. So it's, it's a growth mechanism. So you capture that increment above the baseline.
So for RDA, RDA one, affect, when, we don't make any money off of that until 2027? We're just paying down debt? Is that what I?
We are receiving tax increment, but there's not enough coming in to pay all the debt.
Okay, and we have 8 million ish or whatever in RDA two?
Correct.
Could we take money from RDA two and pay off RD A one or?
No, no, they're separate entities.
They're separate entities, even though we, and then the money that we borrowed from RDA two, we have to pay back.
We have to pay back at a 2% interest rate, yes. Once it starts receiving a significant, enough that it can afford to start paying back, that's the plan.
What happens after they're gone in 2043 with RDA one? What is?
What happens when they're gone is it just goes back to how it was before you created them. So all of the property tax that's generated in that area goes into the big pool of property tax. And then it's divided out between Reno, the Washoe County and the school district. So it's divided just like normal property tax at that point because the RDA doesn't exist anymore.
And imagine there's rules on what we can use this money for and where we can use it?
There is, there, it, like for RDA two, you have to use it within the RDA two area. And for RD one, you have to use it in the RDA one area. For the baseball, as I mentioned, there is a nexus that because of the location of the baseball field, it qualifies for both. But you do have to be very careful about, we cannot spend RDA two money in an RDA one area. So even though there's money in RDA two, we cannot really spend that money downtown. It would still have to be to the areas of RDA two.
Okay. Thank you for indulging me, members.
But could you just answer her other question too, which is what can you spend it for?
I think Eric's going to go into a lot of that, so I'm going to defer to him on that one.
Ms. Taylor, did that answer your questions? I know as one of the newer members, you sometimes have those questions and I want to make sure they're answered.
No, they answered. Yes, thank you very much.
Ms. Breckus, it looks like the computer gremlins are working and you're in the queue.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate hearing Ms. Taylor's questions because these are very complex. I started many years ago in a redevelopment agency. It was one of my first jobs, staffed through tax increment financing as a junior staffer. And so I had, you know, early formation, different state. But Reno's RDA experience is incredibly complex and many permutations. And, you know, you, I think that as you move forward on this, you can't lose track of, you know, what your values are and what your policy statements are and, you know, your track record. And that's why I objected to the extension of the 15 year because it did not go with an update to the plan, which I think still today was in opposition to statutory retire requirements. My husband was the redevelopment agency manager over for Sparks for two, over two decades. And they did not make really any investments outside of their plan area. They would do minor plan amendments all the time. Whereas we did a complete extension of the life of this agency and didn't even update our plan. And I think those downtown property owners really had a chance to challenge the city on how we did that. And I'll, I'll continue to state that. But the borrowing from two to one was actually an idea that I came up with, asked prior finance directors if it was okay and thought it was prudent at the time. But a couple of questions for you still are, is there any way on the books that either of the RDAs, now that they're throwing off TIF, have a repayment to the general fund for those early baseball agreements? The baseball agreement, as I understand, was both a city obligation and an RDA obligation. And to the degree that it was paid for out of the general fund in some past years, you said up to 2017. Can RDA pay back the general fund for those? Is that on the books to do?
We have, I have not anticipated that in here, but I'm glad to look into that with the attorney's office and see if that's something that we could potentially do. Absolutely.
I always want to keep the general fund as whole as it can be. And I think that, you know, if we can track that down and that was maybe, I don't know, what were we paying a year in those early years?
I don't remember. We were doing it when I got here in 2016.
What are we paying this year?
We're not using any general fund money for it.
What's our baseball obligation?
It's 1.1 million dollars.
This year? Okay, so if we have five years, that's 5 million to the general fund. Number two is I do think we could spend money, money can be spent outside of the RDAs. I always thought that you could cross a nexus and go maybe a few blocks over to a pri, a school or a park or something. So that's another one to, to check into. But I, now that the tips are coming off, I, I think it really needs to be clarified to this body that who's losing out on these? You mentioned the county and the school district, but also our own general fund. Because this would be property tax coming back to us for police, fire and park operations. You know, so it's really, it's really big money that we get to play with. And in my view, it's a thievery from the school district. And I will be at school district meetings as this process goes forward, letting them know how much money is projected to be taken off of their, of their baseline through this RDA life as it starts to TIF. In the state that I worked at before, a city had to go to the school district and the school district said, yes, okay, you're going to, we're going to give up our property tax to you. Here, and there, I think there were some law changes at some point. School district had no choice on it. I felt, always felt that was wrong public policy. I think, but I don't know, Sparks remedied that by making side contracts with the schools. So I'm, I'm going to be looking for that because it's, you know, it's, it's our money and we have a little more discretion. But when we're hitting the school district money, I have a real problem seeing 90 million dollars, whatever their shares of 90 million dollars over a period of time coming off the school district budget. And I'm sure they do, you know, knowing how hard they went up against the incline tax struggles. Thank you.
Any additional questions from the body? Ms. Van Buren, it'll come as no surprise to you, but I won't agree with my colleague from Ward one. Certainly, I wouldn't describe the actions of a city in its redevelopment as thievery. That kind of, that kind of language, just as it stands, really is anathema to the process of good governance. I'm proud to serve on the school board, capital projects fund, surcharge advisory committee and the oversight of the school district through that process is an important one. I have, I'm a product of Washoe County Schools. I have three children who are the product of Washoe County Schools. And tax increment financing is a tool, right, as, as any tool is. And I don't think it, you, you're not here today to stand before us and talk about the policy implications of TIF, right? You've given us an overview of its history, about the financial implications that it has created over its lifetime and what it's projected to be. As a body, of course, I, I've spent a lot of time studying TIFs. I have spent a fair amount of time studying TIFs that are successful and some that are unsuccessful. Because if you look at them and their use across this country, there are varying degrees to which they are successful. Kansas City is the example that I would posit. I would say roughly 800 tax increment financing different areas exist within the greater metropolitan area in Kansas City, and some of which have been incredibly successful and some of which have not been. We have an opportunity here at this body, I think, to chart a vision. And the, the financing increment that is thrown off by these districts, I think, gives us a chance to remake many of the things for which we have not had the opportunity to do so, either because of our debt obligations through the, the historical use of debt in the city and also through just our, the way we, we have to manage the general fund. And so it's a different tool. I think we should use all tools in the toolbox to do the things that we want to accomplish together as a community. For my part, and I'm looking forward to the next parts of the presentation, I think this is a, perhaps will be one of the more important discussions that we'll have as a council. The budget is its own important discussion. I've been very encouraged by the comments that have been had throughout this process. But this one, more importantly, is, is a very exciting one because it endeavors to allow us to do the things which we perhaps have not been able to do previously. Now, with regard to both the RDAs, I didn't totally understand the explanation that you gave about how they overlap. And therefore, in one sense, the funds could be obligated to pay for the baseball agreements, but they might not otherwise be able to be used. Can you explain that to me again?
Correct. And Councilmember Breckus kind of got at this too. Depends on the location. So because of the location of the ballpark, it has a nexus to both areas, the way it sits. So you could say it's close to either one. It may be in one, but it's so close to the other one. The net, there's a nexus there and that could potentially be for other properties as well. As you start to look at properties, maybe there is a nexus that could be made between one or the other.
About, for example, the central fire station? This is a question I have in my own mind, given the location possibly being very adjacent to there at the old police station site. Is that the kind of thing where you're saying geographically it may make some sense that it's related? Okay.
Yes, and I've, I'm expired, I'm, I'm exploring that option as well and have talked to the attorneys about that as well. So I think we may have an opportunity there to.
I think Ms. Breckus posits an important point about our attorneys, the city attorney's office. And I, I know that they always take strongly the inquiries that we make here. So you'll let us know how it turns out as to the issue that she's identified because I do think there is some historical, I don't know if it's ill feeling, but there is certainly some angst among a certain segment of the population who feels like that obligation was perhaps not the one that they might have made. I think in, in electoral seasons, people are, like to throw rocks a lot of times. So they, they use this as a cudgel or to say that we've somehow mismanaged funds. It really wasn't that. And the complexities around that settlement are one that took me probably two or three years to get my hands around just to understand it. And so the staff has been very good to help me with that. So I would encourage any of the newer members, if they aren't familiar with the history, it does bear some relevance even to our discussions today. So thank you for that. Are there any other questions on this item, its presentation?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and that was my question is on the bonds. If you do, you know, think, if the body comes to a point where they see TIF and they wanted to use it in protection of the general fund, which should always be our highest priority, for the central fire station, how soon could they issue those bonds out? Could they issue them on projections that come out as far out as on your?
That's, that's something I'll have to look into. And I don't know that necessarily we, we would do it based on this, but maybe we, we do it based on the general fund, but then we kind of backfill a portion of it based on how it's situated and where it is as far as, and it wouldn't be for the construction. What I'm thinking of would be for debt service as a portion.
Yeah.
But it's just a thought at this point and we're, I'm working on it. So we're examining all areas, make sure we cover ourselves.
Well, obviously, we'll go through a public process of amending the plans, but that'd be interesting because usually it's revenue being, bonds being backed by the general fund. Here you're talking about general fund being backed by TIF, which.
No, it wouldn't be backed by that. The general fund would still back it. For example, one of the things where you're going to see when I bring the budget back to you for, there are other opportunities sometimes. So with the 60 million dollar bond that we have out for Public Safety Center, we have an opportunity where we can use some of the police impact fees that have been collected for the impact facility to pay a portion of those bonds. You can pay a portion that is considered the new growth. And so in my mind, this would be something similar. You would still issue them, general fund backed, but if you have an opportunity to reimburse from another source or use another source, we would be able to do that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Anyway, now, I want to, I want to kind of talk about it because there has been a tremendous history of TIF abuse documented in urban literature, you know. And the wins, I, in my view, far outweigh the negatives. And I think that's why California in their last budget crisis got rid of all redevelopment agencies and moved them off into a different thing. But, so you could have a Mr., let's say, Mr. Jacobs, who's going to show out the Globe Plaza or the, the neon line development agreement boundary or the GSR, who has the GSR property, and come to the body and say, look, I'm going to invest 100 million. That's going to, you know, be my private property investment. And I'm going to spill off this much TIF, but I want it back. You know, you wouldn't be getting this tip if I didn't get it back and I want it to make me whole, you know? And that's the way that wired, influential developers benefit from the TIF and the other communities don't. So your projections on properties, which you have already as a baseline, do those calculate, whose investments do those calculate? Does that calculate all of the neon line being built out to the parameters of the development agreement? Does it calculate out, you know? Because, because when people come and ask for the money, they're going to have to show above the tip, but you've got those calculations showing. So what are you showing in those calculations?
We had a study done back in 2019 that took into account any developments that we knew of at that point that were in the works or would be in the works. And then it took a look at how probable are they to move forward and what's the timing of them coming online? So we did have an outside consultant come in and do some projections on that so we could get that. But what you're actually seeing, what we're actually seeing is it's coming in a lot faster than what they had on theirs because I think they, they were very conservative in as far as only looking at the ones that were at a certain point with their plans and everything like that. And so that is one area, I think, where we do need to go out and have that updated again because they did a very good job on it and for a few years it tracked right on. But now it's kind of, the projections I've used, it kind of jumped ahead a couple of years. And that's where I kind of picked up to continue the same trend up. So I do believe we've had more things come online quicker than what they anticipated. And so that is something we should look at probably updating because that would be a good use of the money.
Thank you, Ms. Van Buren. Does anyone have any additional questions? I think that this presentation is very comprehensive. I thank you for that.
Thank you.
I, I continue to believe that under your leadership, we are trying to evaluate all the tools. Ms. Duer said something earlier today that really resonated with me, which was that in government, we know that there are always more needs than there are funds to do the thing. And ultimately, what I have appreciated about your approach is that you are helping us to use the tools we have in the toolbox. TIF is an extraordinary tool. It is a different and challenging tool, complex in all its varieties. Again, some cities have had great relationships with it, others not so good. Let us hope that we approach it with the solemnity which it is owed, right? And I think that, again, you are helping us to do that by balancing these sort of competing ideas. Obviously, I think, you know, conspiracy theories about who does what to whom benefit no one in this room, right? All of us are on this diet because we cared deeply about this community, just as you work in the service of the city because you do. And so I, I think as we do so, if, as, when we enter this room, if we have the best of intentions and are transparent in our approach, we will come to the right conclusions and we'll do so together. So I appreciate that. Let's move on to the next agenda items. It sounds like we're going to go to E41. And, and I think if I'm not mistaken, there are staff presentations here. Mr. Edelstein, are there different presentations? Mr. Edelstein, are there different presentations on 41 and 42 or are they the same presentation?
They were contemplated to be handled together.
Right. And so I'm gonna um, uh, open them as item E41 now. And we'll have the presentation that you have. If there are for some reason, catch-up or cleanup items that are specific only to E42, I'll briefly open it, but maybe not expect you to do another presentation. Um, unless there is a need from the body in some way. But the clerk is telling me that I don't have to be so formal, but I, I would like to do E41, open it now. We'll go and make the presentations, ask the questions. I see that you've identified it here. I just want to make sure that I am comporting with our attorney's advice. Um, an important part of the job is, is knowing that although I am an attorney, I am here, not that. And so I want to take the advice that our legal counsel has given. We'll open E41, make the presentations, ask the questions. We'll close it. We'll open E42 briefly. And then we'll have done the formal process that is necessary to engage in this iterative process. E41.
Good afternoon again, Vice Mayor, Council, Eric Edelstein, Assistant City Manager for the record. Uh, I think through the, uh, through the presentations today, um, some of the words I've written down. Um, and probably could keep tally on, but uh, this topic, the topic of downtown, the topic of RDA, it's layered, it's complex, and it's all connected to everything else. So we can't just talk about downtown without understanding the, how it layers out. Um, but this is inherently, uh, inherently can, complex and, and always connected. And there we go. So always want to look at, at council's goals and I don't think there's a single thing uh, in, in council's goals that is not uh, supported by a thriving downtown. And again, the downtown impacts the whole city and the whole city impacts the downtown. So we're going to focus on the downtown, but what we're talking about is enhancing the quality of life that makes Reno a better place for everybody, no matter where you live, where you work. We are going to talk through this process about a number of plans that are coming online in a layered way. We are talking about dominos that are about to fall, not darts being thrown in different directions. So the dominos are coming and we're going to talk through all of those things. Um, I'm not asking for a motion today, but I am asking through the redevelopment agency budgeting process that we consider some expenditures from RDA2. So keep that in, in your mind as, as we're talking. So as we look at the, the downtown update, I bring this, start with this map that, um, that was shown last week at council meet. Excuse me, from the, uh, the Downtown Reno Partnership. Um, and this map shows downtown, um, projects that are happening, um, for residential. This is 1,300 residential units, either in construction or pre-construction in downtown. This is different. Um, this is, this is important. Our revitalization manager who could not be here today, um, Brian has talked about a, a goal of having 10,000 new residents uh, in the next 10 years in Reno. And with these units, we are, um, we are on our way, um, to having that, meeting that goal in downtown. The redevelopment agency that we'll talk about as we go through here, I think is important to remember that it is a leverageable asset. Um, so it is not a, is not a, it's not a regressive tax. We have C tax, we have property tax, we know how those taxes come in. The redevelopment agency funds can increase as we speed up the, the rate of, the rate of growth. So they're a leverageable asset, they're an investable asset. Um, so we're going to talk about how those redevelopment agency funds can layer in to everything else that we're doing. And also, we will talk through, again, layered and complex, how RDA1 and RDA2 are funding and sort of how we'll meet the balance of the lack of funds in RDA1 with the funds in RDA2. So want to talk now about the projects that are in place. We talked about the dominos. So Virginia Street Placemaking, none of these will be new to you, but it may be the first time that they've all been kind of put together in, in one place to understand. So uh, Virginia Street Placemaking, um, we know that, uh, we have $2 million, um, thanks to your vote um, a couple of council meetings ago, uh, to, to take the recommendations from GEL, which are due here uh, in April, uh, to be presented to you. Um, and apply $2 million to activating the Virginia Street, uh, front edge, um, to their recommendations. Um, we also have a half a million dollars in a facade improvement program. I looked for the most dramatic example I could bring to you. Um, just a, one small example from an actual facade improvement program. Um, this one happens to be from Knoxville, Tennessee, but they are, uh, there are many of these programs throughout the country. And just a, a simple example, um, these facade improvement program plans will be built off of matching funds. Um, so we won't be giving complete handouts. This will be a matching fund um, for those interested in improving the fronts of their, of their buildings. Micromobility, um, so we've got placemaking, um, followed by micromobility. So next council meeting will be Virginia Street Placemaking. The council meeting after that will be micromobility. Um, we all saw the, uh, the impacts of micromobility, um, over the course of last summer. Some were more positive than others. Um, however, we do know that overall, the pilot program showed that the, the micromobility, um, lanes that were created, um, they increased usage, they increased satisfaction. And maybe most importantly, they increased safety of those using bikes, um, and other modes of vehi, uh, modes of transportation outside of, uh, vehicles or walking. The next layer domino here is the PROS plan. PROS is Parks, Recreation and Open Spaces. Um, we don't yet have an exact date for that, that final presentation. This is a, this is a citywide program. Um, we're looking at all the park, park recreation, open spaces throughout, uh, throughout the city. But um, being that we do have a river that, that rolls through downtown, which makes us unique and special, along with the parks that are, are included in that. The PROS plan is going to be another plan that is going to help inform where our priorities are, where we can make strategic investments to drive the overall vision of a healthy and vibrant downtown. This is just a few of the elements of the plan. Um, but activating the Truckee River and downtown public spaces is probably the most relevant to this specific presentation. Last element, pre-RDA discussion here is special events. So just a week ago, we approved an activation coordinator. Um, in the next council, uh, meeting, if I can figure out Prime Gov, I will have a resolution to be presented to you all, um, to, uh, um, to, to take the recommendations to help expedite our sponsorship, uh, funding. And, uh, and then we know that we have 125 special event permits. Little different than special activity with special event permits. We have 125 current, um, at this point in the calendar. Um, we are going to start looking at where they are, when they're happening. Um, and that activation coordinator will, um, will have a baseline of what's happening um, to be able to start working on council priorities to activate the spaces and the places that, that we know, uh, again, help create a vibrant downtown. Moving into the RDA, so um, Director Van Buren gave, we, we fiercely debated whether this presentation should go before the numbers. And admittedly, it could have gone either way. Um, so I hope to bring some clarity maybe to some of the questions that came, um, from the numbers. But we felt that having a baseline of expectation of what the revenues looked like may help make this element of the presentation go a little bit, uh, smoother and be more digestible. Um, so the history of the RDA, important, you know, a few important distinctions here. It is separate and distinct from the city. You all are the, the redevelopment agency board, but um, the ways that we can utilize those funds are different than, um, than a city. Uh, the original plan written in 1983, um, had large, large goals. I'll talk about the plans here in a minute. Um, but looked at the city in four to six block spaces, um, of improvement. What did we do with those over time? Lots of things, but I think if we're still talking about uh, adding vibrancy to downtown, I think we could all agree that we maybe didn't quite hit the mark uh, on totality in our, in our past plans. So we need a different approach to what we're going to do with these, with these new funds. What can RDA fund? These are the things that, that RDA can do. So different than, than the city itself, the RDA can buy property, can lease property, um, can incentivize relocation as specifically as it would want, can pay individual private citizens or business owners to come and locate a business in a space if the board believes that that is important. There is a, a wide range of opportunity, of economic opportunity that the RDA can do that a city in and of itself cannot do. So we can incentivize relocation, we can fund development. Um, we can do public improvements, we can pay employees, which we will talk about, uh, here in a little bit. So as we continue here, just to bring back the maps and a little bit more context to, to the overall conversation. Um, we know that RDA1, because of the extension, has a longer runway, but not as, not as wonderful of an immediate future because of the debt. As, uh, as Director Van Buren said, the, the genera, the general trajectory is based on what we know and what we've known. So anything new that comes online is 100% increment that adds on top of the, um, of the growth that we're, we're showing here. Again, I'm going to say this a few different times, but th, this is a leverageable asset that, uh, incentivizing the right kind of growth, that adds the right type of taxes can add increment on increment on increment, which then can be continually reinvested in our overall growth. Um, again, RDA1, nice, small, simple space. I think most of us all know that area. Um, RDA2, probably most of us would be hard pressed to know exactly every parcel, um, in this space. Uh, RDA2 right now, um, as you saw, has funds accruing and will continue to be accruing funds. So important to note, we've got more money earlier in RDA2 with less of a runway to deploy that money and get the returns. I do not believe these are all the plans, but these are some of the plans that have been written since RDA came on board. We have plans. We have lots of plans. The plans all say the same thing. We have a wonderful university at the north part of downtown. We have a natural occurring river through the center of our downtown. And Virginia Street is the main line through downtown. So we know this, the plans have reinforced it over and over. Virginia Street Placemaking is, is an opportunity to get a little bit more dialed into that. So we do, we have the plans, we've seen the plans. And we know what, we know what those, what those plans say. So what should the RDA focus on? Well, I asked ChatGPT to help me with that answer. And this is what ChatGPT, um, shared as, uh, the overarching goals. I did have, candidly, I did have to delete a few lines just to get this onto a slide. But, uh, I don't think ChatGPT is wrong utilizing open source AI from all of, uh, all of the internets. Um, we are enhancing our, the overall quality of life, revitalizing blighted and underutilized areas, creating jobs, increasing property values. And we're going to utilize the tools that RDA has that again, are separate and distinct and leverageable from a city itself. What we're here today to ask for is not another plan. We need an implementation strategy. Do we need to do some work on the implementation? Yes. But we don't need another plan to tell us where. We don't need another plan to tell us what are the, well, we may need a plan to tell us what types of things we want to do. However, we know the space, we know the area. And based on RDA2 and RDA1, we already know the geographics that we're dealing with here. So we get to get really, uh, granular here now in determining what we want to do. So the thoughts on implementation discussion here is that we need to have a five-year plan that we get built in the next fiscal year, focused on RDA2 and the benefits to RDA2, while we have a longer runway on RDA1. With the ARPA funding that we have allocated, and apologize if I'm jumping between items here a little bit, but because RDA1 does not have the funding immediately, we do have ARPA allocations that over the next few years will fund significant investment into that RDA1 space. So we aren't leaving RDA1 for some long-term future. Um, we are investing what we do have that's available to us. And I think we have to look at a longer runway. The top right there, I'll point to in, in the opinion that I, I bring to this, uh, to this body, I think we need to look at our funding in three ways. The last bullet I put there because it is an available place that we can use funding, but I think we've done that, um, as a city. And I wouldn't necessarily be advocating for any large projects or facilities specifically. But I think looking at our infrastructure and then really looking block by block and determining what is the types of funding for what types of uses that council would like to see in those spaces. That is an exercise that we can do and can be really, uh, exciting um, for, for council and for our community, um, to see how these RDAs can benefit, um, that quality of life. What do we need to execute? Again, through the budget process, we are going to ask that RDA2, um, fund a, a consultant for prioritization, um, of the spaces and of the uses. And then we are looking for two positions, um, a management analyst for property to help us understand all the properties within the RDA. Um, and then also a business license compliance and revenue officer that can be focused exclusively on the RDA to continue on the path that Ms. Turney spoke about earlier. Um, to make sure that in the spaces we've determined as redevelopment areas, we have someone living and breathing all of those buildings, all of those businesses, and ensuring that the very best of Reno is being represented throughout. I hope that that made some level of coherence and sense, um, but if it did not in any way, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, um, Mr. Edelstein, I'm going to start. Um, because I want to ask a couple of questions. I think it'll be helpful for me to just situate myself. The first is, and I'll, I'll start here. I, I know you, um, meant it interestingly and, and in a lighthearted nature, but ChatGPT. So I think this is a resource that we have got to get a handle on as a city. And this is separate and apart from my thoughts about the RDA, but you are highlighting for me why I think it's important. It is a, a very interesting tool. It has a lot of applications. It has some, uh, issues that we're going to have to work through as a society. But I'm glad that, uh, you are thinking about it. But this also tells me that you are, um, and I, I believe this when we, uh, learned that you would be joining the city team. You're, you're looking for new and innovative ways to connect and to communicate. So kudos to you for including it. Appreciate that. Second is I want to make sure that as we approach, um, the, what I see as a sort of an, uh, I think I described it earlier this morning, not necessarily about this, but about my general feeling about Reno, is this moment of renaissance, an opportunity for us to create the vision we have for the city for the next 20 years. Um, I think a lot of the last 10 years have been really focused on paying down debt. They've been focused on some of the micro issues related to city governance. We survived a global pandemic. All those things are important and, and have had their moment. This is the moment now for us to go out and explore some of these new opportunities, and this is one of them. When we do that, I want us to continue to focus as we are as an organization on filtering all these things through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion. So I think that whatever we do, Mrs. Sparza will need to be uh, integrally involved in it from the city manager's office. And, and it really does overlay a lot of what you're talking about. And so it must be the lens through which we operate, I think, uh, to operate successfully. Yes, we can go forward in the spirit of the excitement of Renaissance revival. I think one of your slides said hope. That's a word I think is a very good one. So I want to make sure that I have forefronted that. And then the last thing is, is I, and maybe this is where I'll, um, leave it to you to talk me through it, but um, look, all of us on this dais would probably have ideas differing, similar um, about how to and what for and how to spend the money, right? So for my part, I, I want us, of course, to prioritize people and I, and this beautiful community we live. So things that are coming to the top of my mind as I dream a little out loud are the Lear Theater. Um, I think about the train station in the California building. Um, perhaps the South Side School, although I understand that many other renovations being done there are the obligation of our tenant. Um, but my point is, is that these are beautiful facilities, long-suffering. Uh, we've never found the financial resources to make them what they should be, which is incredible. So consider those as part of this, uh, the River Park, right? This idea that we have never had a dedicated funding source to, uh, uh, allow the river to be all that it can be and that it should be. Uh, we were in Columbus this fall, a group of us from the city of Reno. And we saw a beautiful river system that was flanked by parks and, and recreational opportunities. So we've got to, I think, focus on that. Um, our citizens consistently say that parks and recreation are a number one thing. And so I want to make sure that those are some of the things I'm just sort of putting out there at an initial, uh, part. And again, uh, incredible presentation. I appreciate the, the hopefulness and the joyfulness of it. Uh, because that's not always present in government. So thank you for that. Let me see who's in the queue first. I think Ms. Dewar, you were. Nope, then it's telling me, let me refresh. Give me one second. I don't see, oh, Ms. Taylor in the queue, saved by the bell. Thank you for that.
I'm trying to follow the.
I'm trying to follow the rules. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm very excited about the opportunities. A couple of things. You, we have, we allocated $3 million to the river, right? Last, the River Parks. So this can be part of this revitalization in addition to the 2 million in the facade?
Absolutely, just a miss in the presentation. Yes.
DRP explained that they were going to be doing a facade, some sort of a facade improvement downtown too. So whatever you decide to do moving forward, I would encourage you and them to work together so that we are maximizing our resources. They might have already got some of the laid work legwork done for us. So if we don't have to duplicate efforts, I think that would be something fantastic. Can you explain a little bit the the what you need to execute? This is really important because we do have so many plans and you can go back and you look at this and it's just the same and the same and the same. So when you look at these three positions that you're asking for, how do these folks get us to where we want to be with the execution and what we want to see?
Thank you for the question. There's, to me, there's two columns here. There's the property and its its use, current highest and best potential in the future. And there is the type of use that then can be connected. So we need to understand first what is in the RDA. So that management analyst understanding everything from what are the what are the buildings? What's currently there? What is it zoned for? What are the potential things that could fit into that that existing space? And then all the things that can fit into that existing space. And then it's matchmaking and prioritization. And that that is going to be somewhat of an iterative process. It is, the possibilities are somewhat endless, which can also make them difficult to to rein in. But in its, in the most simplistic answer, it's going to help us identify what are the top priority parcels? And what are the council directed priority uses that we'd like to see? And then we can create incentivization plans to get those uses.
So let me ask you something right there, not to interrupt you, but something you brought up was use of tax increment. And then you had six things that we could do or we could use that for. Have we done that in the past? Because when Vice Mayor was talking about you thinking outside of the box, these are things that I I don't know if I've seen us do, but I'm super encouraged by them and supportive. Sorry, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm going over.
Thank you for the question. I believe we have done some of these things. I do not believe we have done all of these things. We have funded employees in the past. We have incentivized relocation. We have, we have funded development. The buy property, lease property, I maybe the retract, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to say that for sure on the record.
And I guess what I'm getting at is these things are positive tools that we can use that will help us reinvest in these RDAs to kick off more money. So it's kind of a self fulfilling prophecy, if I'm understanding.
You're you're correct. And the specifics that are allowable by by RDA is these are, these do not have to be nudges. So the the concept of a a development agreement on a block. If we decide there's a space that we want to incentivize a certain type of development, what, you know, be it housing, be it mixed use. This body could in theory create a development agreement that utilizes some of the funds to specifically fund the specific objective in the specific place. And we could pre agree to that. And then someone with assurance of speed and certainty could then take that development agreement off the shelf and give the council what they've asked for.
Chicken and pickle. I'm done.
It's in the notes. Thank you.
Yeah, chicken and pickle. I'll echo that too. I, when you said.
We had, what, 65 projects that we wanted to do along the river to help with flooding and revitalization and other issues. And one of the things I think that we did that was the best was we created a map book. So so at every block of the river, you could see what was contemplated. And that plan, the map, was put together with the citizens with in a charrette type format. We brought in a consultant. We papered the whole wall. And the citizenry discussed these priorities. And I think that could be a potential model, you know, to follow, to figure out, okay, what are the next steps? What's priority one? What's priority two? Is there a logical way we go about that? You know, I've talked, I could come up with an idea a day on how to spend the money or what we should do. The first three things that came to my mind, you know, I want to confirm and agree with Vice Mayor's list here, which was primarily historical buildings. And I, but I also want to think about things we're already working on, like bathrooms. We've built two bathrooms in four years. They're not that expensive. I mean, they're, let's just say rounding 250,000. That's the building the bathroom, installing the bathroom, maintaining the its lifecycle cost. So that's probably a small pit and right related to 90 million. But it seems like we need, you know, they all, it's like in the Maslow's hierarchy, we need to be able to, you know, eat, sleep and maybe pee too. Right? So so that's on my mind is we're looking at a bathroom every year and a half because we're putting together all this grant funding and it's just too slow. I think that would be a major thing to get all 10 bathrooms done. The city plaza, so the whole entire time I've been on and before I ever joined council, they've been talking about some kind of shade at City Plaza, right? It's only getting hotter, even though we've had this winter from heck. But and I'm not saying cover the whole thing, but we've seen some magnificent designs. We've seen average designs. We've seen simple designs that aren't very expensive. But I think you came up with it when you said the placemaking, I sat in on that discussion of what the residents talked about. It's one bookend of the whole Virginia Street. I would love to see it. I would love to see the development at the far end. You know, develop redeveloping the circus circus garage. And then the third thing, the Vice Mayor mentioned DEI principles. I would also like to see sustainability principles threaded throughout. Everything we do, can this be a green building? Can this add to our energy independence? Can this, if it's parking or parking related, can we have EV charging, you know, and so on? In other words, it shouldn't be kind of old style. It should be new focus. If it's a building, the coloration of the building, the heating ventilation of the building. Could we further require installation of solar throughout the whole downtown corridor? Those kind of things, I think, just, I mean, just as a principle, just like DI is a principle. So just some thoughts to get going, but I'm assuming you've kind of got the roadmap with your placemaking, your facade, your micro mobility, your parks, your special events, all embedded in there, I assume, is the bowling stadium, something we've talked about forever. But anyway, but that's not so much, that's reactivating the space. It's not the look and feel of the space because largely look the same. But it would be interesting to see the things that make it different, you know, change the look. Just like we did with the retract cover, it changed things, stuff like that.
Thank you for your comments. If I may also say the limitations of ChatGPT are on display with those two references to sustainability and DEI as the historical references wouldn't have, wouldn't have caught those, so.
Well, the the truth is, is that sustainability is diversity, equity, inclusion. Because of course, people in marginalized communities are most impacted by climate related issues. And so they're not opposite. They are the same. Those are the same lens. I think that we're just learning how to characterize the way we use language to describe them that way. But certainly all of those things would be true of Ms. Dewar's proposal and mine. We see the world very similarly on those issues.
And trees, of course, I'd be, you know, it'd be got my hands slapped if I didn't even mention it. You know, we have the heat island here, and this is the greatest concentration of the heat island is right in the downtown core. And so anything we can do, you know, if it's trees, if it's something else, the shade.
Thank you.
Ms. Breckus, I think you're next in the queue.
Have you read Nevada Revise Statutes 279 that governs?
I have read it once. I would not say I'm an expert in it.
Have you read the RDA two plan?
If it was listed there, I have likely read it. If it was not, I may have not.
Okay. Is it your interpretation that we need to go back and do the plan? Redo amend the plan because I a little nervous, you know, the statute really speaks a lot to your redevelopment plan. And, you know, if we're going off here, going off there, making, you know, this, these investment decisions and they're not in the plan. You know, that could be a problem. Have you talked to the attorneys about, you know, the plan? The overall plan?
Thank you for the question. So I I understand that I believe the references to the the redevelopment plan must be presented to the state, I believe, or there must be.
Every year you need to report.
Yes. So I think I tried to have a little fun with wordplay. We do need to create an implementation strategy. I don't think we need a full plan. I think we know the spaces, we know the uses, we need an implementation strategy. And I think that would suffice for the for the statute. But I have not conferred with with legal and obviously I would before we would present anything further.
Yeah, I mean, you're presenting budget items and I would, I would say, you know, you, the plan is the plan. Okay, when they set up the organization, the entity, they have a plan. But there's procedures to amend the plan to put in, say, example, Mr. Reese's value of DEI investments, you know, to kind of set the intent. I'm just trying to understand, you know, because she had no more plans, but really you live and die with RDA under your plan and subsequent amendments is is how I've always viewed it. And I'm just wondering if we're going to go out and amend the plan. And, you know, unlike RDA one, RDA two has a lot of players, a lot of folks in there who have a, you know, tie of their taxes to the TIP. And in my view, the plan or its amendments have to be as specific as possible for that person to be satisfied because they seem to have a little extra kind of right to the TIP or questioning the process. So I think that's important. I think the practicality of it is the council may be here and say, we want public investment, we want public improvements. And you may have developers asking or meetings with you, you know, all the time about, I want to do this and I want TIP. Have you had anyone? Has anyone walked through the Center City people? Mr. Simons, representatives of Mr. Jacob, asked about the TIP, talked about the TIP in any way?
No, we've not. I've not had anyone directly ask or have I taken a meeting related specifically to TIP?
Because I've seen, you know, what came up during the development agreement, and actually I think it was one of Mr. Jacobs's first asks. We kind of put it over here, but was for the TIP because, you know, giving Mr. Jacobs the taxes that are increased when he invests is very different than bathrooms along the corridor. It's different than my proposal to give and make whole the school district. And, you know, I just also think that the fundamental of a statement that TIP, TIP is not regressive. It is regressive. I'm out, my home is outside of an RDA boundary. And when they come through and reassess my property and my property taxes go up, the city share goes into the general fund to get police officers out there. But downtown, it it doesn't, the growth here. And we've got to sync that up with the fact that we had a downtown property owner wanting foot patrols. You know, well, well, the increases in his property taxes, you know, playing for the police budget. So, you know, we need the plan to conceptualize what our priority is going to be. Because, you know, maybe that is, maybe we we do integrate it with the bid and get and bring some police services down here. But it's going to be very difficult for a body like this to resist an ad hoc request by Mr. Jacobs or the Row or Center City, whoever, for the, you know, the property tax on their properties. That's going to be a hard one for us unless it is solidified in a plan that has gone through the public process. And that's where redevelopment abuse happens and has happened. And I think I'm hearing some great things here. We need to put it in a plan and not leave it open for these asks. And your your conversation of leveraged asset incentivize, that means giveaway. And, you know, there can be giveaway, but, you know, for me, if Mr. Jacobs is going to get any money, it's going to be for 470 new residential, you know, submarket rate rentals, you know, to compensate for those that he demolished. Those are the kind of conversations I'd be looking for in a redevelopment area plan and the subsequent implementation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Breckus raises good points. Perhaps we come about it by a little differently. I assume the best intentions of people. And so I just want to make sure that you understand that I haven't. Well, first of all, I haven't talked to anybody about TIP other than the reading of white papers and trying to understand it. I think I've had conversations among staff. But again, these are all important conversations. If anyone is going to root for Reno, whether it's someone who is interested in developing the Lear and maintaining it and seeing it restored, or whether it's someone who owns, you know, several hundred million dollars worth of property in West Reno, whether it is things that we want to incentivize in any way, whether that's affordable housing or trees. All good inquiries. I mean, I think all these are a possibility for us as we move forward. As I understood it, your presentation today was really focused on getting some direction. And I think we've had some great conversations at the dais and hopefully you've gotten the direction you need. I I just continue to believe this is an exciting time to be here at the city of Reno. I'm humbled to be a small part in it. I see you all working on the staff side every day in the service of this community. And again, I continue to believe in the best, you know, sort of thought about it, that people are good natured and trying to do the right thing. So just continue to keep that joy is what I'm trying to encourage you to do. I cannot tell from this whether or not there are still people in the queue. Ms. Taylor, are you in the queue next? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I don't know where this comment goes, and I think you're probably the last one of the day, so I'm just going to leave it with you. And it is something that we have heard through public comment and people coming here. And I know we have Chief Nance in the office. Police on the street walking downtown is very important to downtown. And I don't want to say I know how to get there or what that looks like. But we need a presence downtown of police walking, at least until this takes off. And I, again, I'm not the expert, but I I hope everybody hears that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, when I was bringing up the flood project earlier, the reason I did is it's a lot more than 90 million. It was a minimum of 350 million to a billion. Nevertheless, and probably what I left unsaid was I presumed that you were going to have the plan. So the flood project two is required by NRS to adopt a plan by the local government, like a formal adoption. And it's set out in statute, just like the RDA, you know, and whenever we we it's changeable. We can amend it all day long, as long as we have it in front of us and take a vote. I had presumed you were going to take that step. I had simply said, once you do as part of it to communicate the plan, a visual showing, you know, block by block, what kind of projects you might think of for 90 million. And again, it doesn't have to be the be all and end all. You know, it can amend, it can change. Some things will come to the fore, some things later. But I do think it is important that we have a government focused plan of infrastructure, sidewalk repair, you know, all the things that, some of the things that we did, for example, in Midtown that probably need to be replicated here in downtown improvements. We dropped wires down, improved drainage, improved parking or redefine parking, improved walking spaces. You know, I understand we have sort of a legacy on our, many of our sidewalks, which are those stepping stones, but they're a trip hazard. They need to be revised. That's why we did the street escape plan was to come up with a with a more pedestrian friendly. So I think only we are going to make those kind of improvements, right? The average bear is not. We already have had requests prior to this for TIP. And so probably predates some. It was for the West Second Street project. They came in, shared a huge project and said, we want 100 million dollars of TIP that we're going to generate and we want it fed back into the stuff we're going to build. So I do expect that kind of thing, you know, if they're going to make a big investment, people are going to ask for money for. What? We didn't do it. No, we did not do it. And they they did not move forward with their project. Yeah, but I mean, they came and pitched it to us. We had a lot of conversation about it. So I'm just saying we can expect it as has been discussed. But I think that's why it's important for us to sort of get the big pieces, whether it's a cover for, I don't want to be repetitive, but whether it's a cover for the plaza, fixing the sidewalks, you know, the basic stuff that only we are going to take care of, you know, the. you know, the basic stuff that only we are going to take care of, you know, the irrigation system for the trees. Nobody wants to do that stuff, but, you know, we got to do it. I mean, if we want a different place. So I'll just leave it there.
Thank you. If I may say, this is, this is the reintroduction of, of a tool that's been fairly dormant for a long time. There is work to be done. As more people get wind that there is increment, I certainly expect asks. I think if we take a disciplined approach, that's agreed upon by the body, then we can avoid the, the trappings of, of one offs.
Yeah.
Good. Very good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah. You know, one of the answers to, you know, foot patrols downtown, you know, my answer, and I'll be bringing up as we move forward in the process with the bid is, you know, fewer marketing people through the bid money and maybe allocation of those funds. Because, you know, that to me is the safety and cleanliness concept of the bid and kind of stumbled across that in my last analysis. Now, I want to get a little bit into your ask of the budget. And I, I, you know, real high level, you just said it's been dormant. To me, that doesn't call for a project manager looking block by block. You know, that's like GIS technician work and so on. And sometimes I see that we want to move forward, and I think this is more addressed to the manager than you, in some area. And we bring in a real low level person who maybe doesn't have the, the the subject material expertise of a journeyman type person or a, you know, a mid, mid-career professional. And there's lack of ability to move forward in a, in an item. So you have a redevelopment agency or what's that guy, the person who's not here, Brian McCardle? What's his title?
Revitalization manager.
Now, is he funded through TIF?
He is not. He is general fund.
Now, in my view, I don't understand why he's the manager. So that implies some subject material expertise. His position isn't TIF funded. And, and then you have, you know, the general fund goes and you have a, a more of a programmatic nature for what he is doing. At that higher, he's doing this higher level because I really don't know what he's doing. And I've sat through months of redevelopment agency joint meetings and I haven't had one thing on the item on the agenda to tell me what he's doing. So, you know, revitalization is very tied in Reno to redevelopment. So I would move him to TIF, but I don't understand what this program management person is going to do. Are they going to work under him? Is that the idea?
I think they could work under him. I think they could report directly to me in, in overseeing the redevelopment agency. I think today's, today's asks are as much conceptual as they are anything. We have not asked for any, any funding of staff from the RDA for a number of years. There were up to 12 people funded out of the RDA at one point. So we felt that this was a starting point to stand back up the functions without diluting the work throughout other areas of the city and other functions of the city.
Yeah. And I, you know, believe me, that story of having 12 people there, I remember that. I worked with them. I knew them. I, you know, been there, know that. So to me, as your first one out the chute, why hire a program management assistant to be the redevelopment key person? Unless you are, which, you know, I, I never understood, and I'll be honest, you weren't on the budget. With, you know, I've got the budget from last year over here and a third assistant city manager was never in the budget, just kind of happened. So maybe you're the redevelopment, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm really trying to understand the organizational setup and the ask. And then the work program.
I think the ask is easily translated into exactly what Mr. Edelstein just said, which is that it's a, it's a work program of implementation of 40 years' worth of plans. And that, of course, requires a particular set of skills, a particular expertise. But even more than that, it requires bandwidth. And so what we're trying to do is create bandwidth to actually go out and implement the tool of, of the RDA.
And Mr. McCardle doesn't do that?
I think revitalization is a much broader concept, at least for us, than confined to just the RDA. And so as you've pointed out during this meeting and previous meetings, there are particular limitations of the RDAs. There are particular rules that surround how that money gets deployed and how it gets used. And it can be a very powerful tool, but it's one that we need people to focus on and they need bandwidth to do that. And so in order to make sure that we have people focusing on that particular work, we do think it's appropriate to put a couple of bodies in the RDA and have them shepherd it through and make it actionable.
But a program management assistant, I mean, what expertise do they have to work on this really sophisticated level of statutory requirement and the plan? I mean, that's, that's like a, what, a three, four-year professional work experience?
I think as Mr. Edelstein described, right, it's, it's having someone to go and do the pick and shovel work that goes into understanding what the inventory of buildings and facilities and opportunity is in the defined spaces. I don't know that I agree that that's particularly technical work. I think that that's time consuming work. And then Mr. Edelstein, Mr. McCardle, myself, the broader group can have the high level conversations about, you know, where things can be leveraged, where things can be deployed. And we can make recommendations to the, to the redevelopment board.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. It just seems, you know, I'm, I'm kind of lost on a lot of the positions that have come in and what they're doing, like the urban economist, a third assistant city manager, revitalization manager. That's been on the books for a long time and we had a predecessor to Mr. McCardle. But, you know, looking at the pick and shovel of the properties, that's like surveys work that a consultant would do. I think that, I, I don't know. I just, I don't, I'm not really getting it. I don't object to putting someone on the redevelopment agency as its funded staff. I just am very puzzled by the fact that it's a program manager. And then the reference that your time, I mean, golly, I hope you're, you know, increment time on this.
Ms. Breckus, thank you. I'm going to come now to Ms. Dewar.
I, I don't have anything.
Oh, no, I, I was hoping you would get us closure on this particular agenda.
Yes, we, sorry. Well, this particular item was about presentation discussion, potential direction to staff. So the question for both you and our city manager is, do you think you've heard enough direction? Or do you need a specific motion today? Because this doesn't say add three people. Is that, I mean, do you have a motion prepared for us or?
There's no motion.
Okay. You just wanted to have the discussion debate? I mean, this is a lovely thing about what our council is supposed to be about is to discuss policy directions, overall program directions. That's what we're doing here.
Mr. Hall, do we need a motion on this item at this time?
You can just accept the presentation.
Yeah. So motion-
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the presentation and have staff put together a plan, implementation plan based on what you heard here today.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Dewar. A second by Ms. Taylor, open for discussion. Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, the, the fact of the motion is sending down by April 1, a budget that shows this program management analyst in there.
I, I don't know what they're going to come back with frankly.
No, I think that's what it does. So can we get confirmation on that? I mean, you have to have a budget down to DFA by when?
Budget down to the state prior to the adoption by this body of the final budget. There will be changes. There are always changes. It's an iterative process until we get down to final adoption. And even then, it's a living document throughout the year as we augment it quarterly.
And certainly my expectation would be, Mr. Edelstein, that you've heard this body and at least the majority of the body is supportive of your hiring that type of position.
And so the budget will have this position in.
I would think so.
I'm not supportive. I, I really, I, I don't object going into the RDA with staff, but I want to understand the work program. I want to understand how it integrates into the, the other functions that are in the city manager's office. I really have some organizational issues that are longstanding, you know, in general, and we're skipping departments. And I don't, and so, you know, I just, I'm not there yet.
Thank you, Ms. Breckus. I appreciate your candor.
I, I could be fine with consultant studies and sort of things like that, but I don't think this is down there as much. And I'm, I'm concerned that the plan, which is basically like the charter, you know, like we have a city charter, is kind of not front and center. And a program analyst isn't going to do that. So I'm going to vote no.
I'm going to comment on the motion though really quickly.
Okay, Ms. Dewar.
I just want to say, maybe it's my experience in trying to do a big, difficult, challenging thing with many, many dollars I risk that I could not have done it without getting a couple of people to help me do it and put the plan together, put the map together, make sure I covered everything, get the budget together. That take, to your point, Mr. Manager, that takes people. It, it doesn't just sort of come. And while we had consultants on the flood project, at the end of the day, the staff had to carry the ball. So I, I have no problem with, you know, funding this at the level that you've suggested.
Mr. Martinez, did you have a comment before we take the vote?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. You may not have the answer to this at the moment, but I know these RDA fundings have a term, let me write, like we know there's going to be an end cap to it. So if we were to fund these positions, has there been any thought to the continuance in financing these? Or is this something that would only last until the lifetime of an RDA?
Thank you.
You want to do it?
Go ahead.
So if you were to keep these positions on, if there were sort of a role for them in the organization beyond the life of the redevelopment agencies, they would have to be rolled in probably to the general fund. Some of the revenue that is increment that we're talking about will come back to the organization as general fund revenue from property taxes. But that is sort of some of the difficulty with winding down a redevelopment agency. But again, you know, having a, having a defined framework, having an understood and adopted strategy for how we go about deploying that, this, these resources in their final glide path is, I think, important.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I know that time is probably going to come after all of us have been here on the DIAS, but I think it's just something that we need to keep in mind because the decisions we take today obviously impact the future and the direction that we're headed. So I just want to bring that up.
Thank you for the question. Appreciate it.
Martinez, we have a motion by Ms. Dewar, a second by Ms. Taylor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to open item E2. I don't believe we are going to have any public comment on it or additional presentation. So I'll open and close it at the same time. That brings us back to you, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll go ahead and move on to item E5, which is closing public comment for the redevelopment agency board. We don't have any registered at this time, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn redevelopment agency.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, a second by Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So we are now going back to closing public comment. If we have any members in the Zoom who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Before we go there, Mr. Vice Mayor, I guess I was going to ask, we're kind of closing out this two-day budget session. So I didn't know before this final public comment, if you wanted any council comment, you know. I don't particularly have any, maybe one or two items, small items, but the next time we see this, well, you'll be presenting the final budget. Right? In May?
Yes.
Right? So I just, I don't know if we have, any of us have party words. I didn't know if you do, I do, anybody does.
I have a final comment.
Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I, you know, Ms. Van Buren has not gotten the C-Tax results in yet. They'll be coming in tomorrow, but they're trending below. And, but she's building a budget on, is it a 4% C-Tax increase? I think the direction of the body, and, and I just don't think you can presume a C-Tax is going to be made up on other places because you've got projections on those. I think that if she gets C-Tax to trend even below, because it's always month to month, that she should be, the direction should be to come back in May with a, a 4%, a 2% and a zero C-Tax. You know, and, and do it how you want, straight cuts or whatever, but this is the time to cut. This is the time to start tightening the belt. I came on in 2012 and, you know, said all along, Reno did not put itself in a position to weather the downturn last time as well as other jurisdictions. So the hits were harder. And this is the time to start to do that. I watched, Washoe County was doing things ahead of Reno, Sparks was doing things ahead of Reno. Reno got to the point where they just started to have to rip bodies out and make very drastic cuts. And I just don't think that, you know, with the way we lag national trends and all, that it's prudent to be tracking a current year C-Tax below and still show a growth in your C-Tax. So I would, I would encourage that scenario work be done and directed to the manager. And, and I think that's just, you know, most, most prudent. And another thing is, you know, whatever era we go into, and hopefully we won't go into one, but the rescue is always, has been federal response in some ways. And the feds have already come in on the COVID. So if there's another downturn, they're not going to come in again. There's no rescue out there. And, you know, the governor was here, Governor Sandoval. The, the state response to the rescue before was, you know, pumping, pumping the abatements to Tesla. And, and, you know, that story has been very mixed on how it played out. So I think it's just really time to be prudent in budgeting and reduce that C-Tax to the 4% she shows, the 2% and the zero if this next month, January, trends below.
Thank you, Ms. Breckus. Ms. Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I wanted to use this time to compliment our manager and the staff. I really think that you did an awesome job putting together a big picture budget. And I thought that there were parts of it that were very educational, even for me. And no matter how many times I've sat through a budget, I learned a lot here today and there's new ideas. And I really appreciate it. I will, in the interim, take a look at the positions and kind of prepare for these scenarios Ms. Breckus laid out, like no positions, one, two, up to 10, and see what I think. And I'll try to communicate that to you, Mr. Manager, you know, separately. I also wanted to say the one thing we talked very specifically about these fees, I was pretty satisfied. We talked about the appeals. I just wanted to go on the record as saying, I, I'm fine with a $100 or less for the, I guess it's called the development project appeals. And I'm fine with a $60 roughly, which is an increase, I think, for the administrative appeals. I just wanted to say that on the record so I didn't say it quietly in the back room or something. But anyway, but generally I thought the fee study was very well done and, you know, I appreciate where we're going with all of that. And also this look at the business licenses, I think it's worth a look. And the improvement in process that we're going to be expecting over the next year, I think will be welcomed by everyone. And especially finally, the code enforcement. We've all talked about it a lot and it's a very useful tool that we've probably underutilized. So I wanted to commend the focus on that too. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think if we have some parting comments, mine are. First of all, thank you for this process. Obviously, it was my first time. Thank you for all the hard work went into it. Some big picture ideas, from what I understand, is I'd like to see some ideas for how we get to close that $177 million gap with capital improvement projects. My priorities for whatever we had left, I think there were a whole bunch of asks in the back of the book. There's not a lot of money to go around. I would say public safety and maintenance and operations are two things that we might need to invest in with that. Again, just my thoughts. I will say this again because I think it's important. I would love to see police on foot downtown and the improvements to downtown. And that's not just because downtown is in Ward 5. I think it's because what everybody said here, downtown is part of our whole city and it makes Reno better and our community. And on the business aspect, anything we can do to make it easier, more friendly and work with some of the software in that area and some of the code enforcement to clean it up in Form 5. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I'll go back to Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So we're on item C1, which is closing public comment. We do not have any registered today. I would just like to note for the record that the council members received an email today about a voicemail not being played. When we collect voicemails or when we collect public comments, we try to keep them directly associated with the agendas. Since these were two workshops specific to budget, the public comment that was left via voicemail was not related to the budget. However, because this came in- However, because this came in, it's clear that that individual did want their voicemail played today. So we have moved it to closing public comment, and we'll go ahead and play it now.
Thank you so much.
The recent well-publicized ethics violations by a current city council member and a former council member are disturbing. The following is a recent quote from one of the violators to the press. "I do want to say this. When this situation arose, I asked the city attorney's office if I needed to disclose that a lawyer at my law firm does some work for the RPPA, or even go so far as to abstain from voting on issues regarding the police contract. The advice and opinion of the city attorney's office was that I didn't need to do either. I felt like it was important to go above and beyond in terms of transparency. So I disclosed the relationship to the city attorney, the city manager, our HR team, my colleagues, and for the public on the record anyway." End of quote. "It should be emphasized and underscored that this council member, according to his quote, asked both the city attorney and the city manager for guidance if he should vote on the police contract. And they both apparently had no problem with the council member voting. This council member who committed the violations is a practicing attorney. The city manager is an attorney, and it goes without saying that the city attorney is an attorney. Would a reasonable person believe that all three attorneys didn't understand our state ethics rules? Would a reasonable person believe that all three attorneys didn't have the knowledge to request an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission, or at the very least, put a call in to the Ethics Commission prior to the police contract vote? This could be a lawyer joke if it wasn't so serious."
Okay, Ms. Clerk, is that all for today?
That is all the public comment for today, so I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Duer, a second by Ms. Taylor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.